I'd like to call to order the June 26, 2023 Board of Education meeting. For the safety of all those in attendance, display of signs or banners will not be permitted. If you have a sign or banner, you will be asked to leave it outside the boardroom for the duration of the meeting. Tonight's meeting is a meeting of the Board held in public, not a public hearing or discussion with the Board. Please be respectful of the presenters, the Board, and your fellow audience members as we discuss and deliberate the items on tonight's agenda. Comments or actions that are threatening to or disrespectful of presenters, the Board, or others in attendance, including the use of foul language or any other behavior that is disruptive of the Board meeting, will result in immediate removal from the meeting. Patrons will be invited to share comments as part of the public comment portion of the meeting is outlined in Board Policy BCBI. That time is set aside on the Board's agenda for members of the public to share their thoughts. It is not a time for dialogue with or a question and answer session with the Board. If your comments require follow-up from the Board or staff, that will occur after tonight's meeting. Patrons who wish to participate in public comment must fill out the public comment form so that the Board or staff can follow up with you regarding your public comment as needed. The District assumes no responsibility or liability for the information shared during public comment. The views expressed are solely those of the speakers and do not necessarily reflect the views of the Lawrence Public Schools. In addition, USD 497 provides access to our Board meetings through live streaming. The platform used for this live streaming has acceptable use rules for content on its site. USD 497 does not delete or hide Board meeting videos, however, the streaming platform may elect to do so if the content of public comment or any other portion of the meeting is found to violate the platform's acceptable use rules. Thank you for your cooperation in these areas. I want to welcome everybody who is here this evening, and thank you for being here. And we have, the next item is approval of the agenda. We do have a motion to amend and approve the agenda this evening.
I move we amend and approve the agenda for the June 26, 2023 Board meeting to include consent agenda item 2.23.
It's our second.
It's Erica's second.
Kimball?
Yes.
Van?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Cadu Blackwood?
Yes.
Gordon Ross?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you. Next is our special recognition this evening, and I am pleased to welcome Deana Johnston, Executive Director of Lawrence Schools Foundation, and Dr. Anthony Lewis, our Superintendent, to present tonight's special recognition.
Good evening, Board members, members of the public. It is certainly my pleasure tonight to honor my fellow Mizzou friend, Dr. Sandra Gott, with the District's 2023 Outstanding Service to Public Education Award. After a 30-year career in higher education, Dr. Gott retired from the University of Kansas as a professor emerita in 2013. She had served as KU's Associate Vice Chancellor for Academic Affairs, Vice Provost for Faculty Development, and as a member of the faculty of the Department of Special Education. During her educational career and following her retirement, Dr. Gott has shared her leadership, time, and talents with numerous community boards, including in her current role as President of the Lawrence Schools Foundation. Dr. Gott's leadership, service, and support enriches education that we provide our scholars and our families. We've also asked our Lawrence Schools Foundation Executive Director, Deana Johnston, to join us and also recognize Dr. Gott for outstanding services to public education and also share a few words. Deana?
Thank you, thank you for allowing us to join you tonight. I am here honored to represent our foundation staff and some of our Board members, present and past, to honor Sandra. Sandra is the epitome of outstanding service, volunteerism, and advocacy for public education. As Dr. Lewis mentioned, even post-retirement, she has broadened her engagement in the Lawrence community and serves on numerous boards, including our foundation, which we've been very honored to have her join us since 2017 and is our current Board President. She spent most of her career advising on both, including childcare center development, ongoing support, and program enhancement, and we've been so fortunate to have her mentorship, guidance, and advocacy here within our community and within the work of the foundation to support our public schools. She has a true passion for providing a high-quality solution for today's working families and ensuring children receive the best early learning experiences possible. With a strong sense of optimism, Sandra continues to be a champion for education. She is a true advocate for our Lawrence Public Schools students, educators, and has continued to make a mark in our community. I'm proud to call her a mentor and a friend, so congratulations, Sandra.
Well, I believe they said everything that I was going to say, however, I'd like to thank the District for this honor. When Julie sent me the email, she made a note that I usually shy away from public recognition, and I told her I like to fly under the radar, so this is above the radar, and I do appreciate it, and I'm honored. Actually, when I received the award, it was meaningful to me because it was coming from the District, but in so many other ways. I realized that the value and potential of public education has been a theme throughout my entire personal and professional life. My father was a high school English teacher and guidance counselor. I'm a product and proud pioneer at Kirkwood High School, Kirkwood Public Schools. I attended public higher education, and following graduation with a degree from the College of Education at Mizzou, I can say that here, I think, I worked in public school districts as either a teacher and/or district administrator before moving into higher education and working in teacher education. So I want to thank the foundation in particular for giving me the opportunity to continue that commitment and also that passion and to fulfill that into retirement, and hopefully I'm just getting going. Thank you again.
And they want to shake your hands, Sandra.
Oh, sorry.
Congratulations, Sandra.
You too, Sarah.
You're welcome.
I'm Mike Witch, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for everything.
Thank you for everything you've done, and we appreciate it.
This is going to say, we love you.
Sandra Gott Fan Club.
And they were on their best.
You know, I often say that schools can't do this work alone. There's too much required, too much necessary, but we are so fortunate to have members in our community like Dr. Gott that has retired and could have just sat at home and did some bird watching or surfing the internet, but she chose to stay in the arena, and for that I am eternally grateful and appreciate all the work that you have done for Lawrence as a community and the work that you're currently doing with the Lawrence Schools Foundation. So congratulations, Dr. Gott. And I hope you like the black and gold image there. Awesome. Thank you.
Congratulations, Dr. Gott. We are so appreciative of your service and so pleased to be able to honor and recognize you this evening, so thank you for being here. Okay, our next item is the report of the Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Lewis.
Yes.
Don't leave, it's just getting good.
I told them they could.
Oh, Julia's telling you. All right, one more back. Okay, here we go. All right, I know several of us met him last week during the special Board meeting, but I wanted to publicly recognize and welcome Matt Resnick, who is our new Lawrence Journal World reporter. Matt is a veteran journalist who is definitely new to the journal world, but definitely not new to reporting. He is a Topeka native and had spent some time with the Fort Scott Tribune in southeast Kansas, and so again, welcome, Matt, and we look forward to you continuing to tell our story and keep the community informed. As FYI for the Board, I began last week reaching out to candidates, well, I didn't, Elise did, reaching out to the candidates, had filed for election, and setting up meetings with them. I had one last week and have one tomorrow, so I look forward to meeting all of the candidates and just introducing myself and answering any questions that they may have. Now to some really good news, all of this is what I'll share tonight, is really, really good news. As I shared in the video on social media last week, the District received a certificate from the Kansas Commissioner of Education, Dr. Randy Watson, acknowledging our accreditation for the next five years. While some may consider school accreditation presumptive, I will tell you that the Kansas standards for student achievement and district accreditation is a rigorous process, and it certainly represents the dedicated focus on our strategic plan as well as our KISA goals, which you will hear more about that tonight, and also a tremendous amount of work from this Board, every single member of this team, including the Board, our scholars, staff, families, and the community at large. And just to read a portion of the letter that Dr. Watson sent us, he said, "Receiving the accredited status indicates that USD 497 is effectively serving the students of its, I'm sorry, effectively serving the needs of its students by demonstrating a focus on the success of each student. On behalf of the State Board of Education, I want to thank you and the many excellent educators in the District for working to ensure that each child has a path towards success after graduation. This certainly is a huge accomplishment and just a true testament to the many dedicated and talented educators that we have in this District." More good news, we are pleased to receive an invitation by the Kansas State Board of Education Member and Mom to highlight the innovative work of our Lawrence College and Career Academy and share some information about its National School Boards Association Magna Award grand prize. And so this will take place on July 11th at the State Board of Education meeting. Board Member Kelly Jones, Dr. Bill DeWitt, and I plan to attend, and so if there's any other Board members that would like to attend, please let Elise know this week, and we will make sure we all go down together. And so that will be this week, I'm sorry, no, next week, week after next, I'm sorry. We'll be in Topeka on July 11th, and the presentation will begin at 3:10 PM. You'll also have an opportunity to ask Dr. DeWitt some questions after the presentation. PAL CWA's ratification vote on the tentative contract agreement reached with the Board concluded at 1:30 this afternoon, and from my understanding, there was an overwhelming number of yes votes, and so as a result, the contract can now be ratified, so that is huge. And more good news, this contract represents significant progress on improving classified staff wages that were made possible by the Board's work, as well as the community's input and participation during the futures planning, community engagement process this year. So this contract will come back to the Board next month for final approval, and we will share more details at that time. Also, voting on ratification for the Board and the LEA's tentative contract agreement, that continues through 11:59 PM on Friday, so I encourage all certified staff with LEA to vote by Friday at 11:59 PM. Our 2023 Memorandum of Understanding with the City of Lawrence and the Lawrence Police Department that guides the work of our School Resource Officer Program is part of our consent agenda this evening, and I want to take a moment to publicly congratulate the City, the Police Department, and the six SROs who work with our schools. The Lawrence, Kansas Police Department SRO Unit won the 2023 National Association of School Resource Officers Model Agency Award. The Model Agency Award is presented to agencies that exemplify the NASRO's Triad Model, which is training, policies, and standards. These practices ensure professional service to the school community, and NASRO wants to recognize the agencies for their creative and innovative approach to school-based policing. We are certainly super grateful for this partnership and the relationship that we have with our Lawrence, Kansas Police Department. Huge shout-out to Officer Wilts, who's here with us this evening, so congratulations. We would like to extend a special acknowledgement to Devon Davis, a 2023 Lawrence High graduate, for his work as assistant artist on a stunning mural that graces the African Caribbean market just off Sixth Street here in Lawrence. We are immensely proud of this extraordinary talent and his contributions to artistic expression within our community. And so you can help celebrate Devon Davis for his remarkable work, be sure to follow him at devon.corn arts on Instagram. There you can take a look at all of his latest pieces. Also, we want to congratulate Thomas Lushington, a Lawrence High May graduate, who was recognized as the 12th-best speaker in the Lincoln Douglas Debate at the National Speech and Debate Tournament in Phoenix, Arizona. This is definitely quite an accomplishment for Thomas, as well as our LHS debate team that's coached by Jeff Polinsky. Just want a reminder, a reminder for the community that summer meals still continue to go on at the sites that are on your screen, New York, Woodlawn, Sunset Hill, Broken Arrow, as well as Holcomb Park, the Public Library, and the Pink Knee Playground. There they have breakfast playdates. The Back to School Douglas County Supply Drive, that's in partnership with our Lawrence Schools Foundation, they are preparing for this drive that will take place in July. The Foundation works with a various number of community partners across Douglas County on this effort to welcome volunteer participation and ask individuals and businesses to donate and host donation drives for school supplies. The goal is to have a backpack of school supplies waiting at school for every child who needs one. The public certainly can find out more information or sign up to volunteer online via the United Ways website at uwcallvalley.org/backtoschool. You may hear more about the Leadership Academy, I'm sure, by Board Member Erica Hill, and you'll have an opportunity to meet these individuals. The image here shows a recent visit to Burton Nash with CEO Patrick Schmidt, along with Board Member Erica Hill. This certainly is an excellent opportunity for these scholars to learn leadership skills from executives at Lawrence Memorial Hospital. Had a meeting with Russ Johnson, Craig Owens, and Chancellor Girard this past Friday, and we, again, began to talk about how more community partners can take part in host leadership academies. LMH has offered to kind of serve as the host or definitely share the blueprint on getting this done. Often say that the future of Lawrence is in our classrooms, and the quicker and the sooner that we can wrap our arms around them and show them all of the many great employers here in Lawrence, the better, and it also allows us an opportunity to keep some of our scholars here once they get a job. It's my understanding that several of the past academy students have received or currently employed at LMH. So an excellent program, one of a kind, and we're super excited for these scholars to be a part of the LMH Leadership Academy. And finally, due to Independence Holiday next week, all buildings, District buildings will be closed on Tuesday. Certainly want to wish the Board, our staff, and school community a happy Fourth of July. That's all I have.
Thank you, Dr. Lewis. Next is the report of the President of the Board. I have just a small number of things to share this evening. First of all, I wanted to express my thanks to our staff for the work that they have put in over the last five years in the KISA accreditation process. As Dr. Lewis mentioned, it's not necessarily a given that districts will achieve success in that process, and it is something that this District has been working on each year for the last five years, and I'm very excited and proud that we have reached that milestone in our process. Of course, now we start all over again in year one in this upcoming year, but that's great. So I wanted to share with the Board, I did have an opportunity to speak with Hank Booth on his radio show on June 13th, which was right after our last Board meeting, to give him an update on the process that we are going through this evening to select a Board member to fill the vacancy on our Board. In addition, I wanted to remind the Board that July 10th upcoming, our next meeting is our organizational meeting for the upcoming year, and we will be voting on, we will be swearing in our new Board Member at that meeting, and we will also be voting on Board leadership at that meeting, so if you are interested in being considered for a Board Officer position, or you wish to nominate a fellow Board Member for a position, please let Elise know by the close of business on Friday, July 7th, so that she can prepare ballots for the July 10th meeting. As a reminder, under our agreed-upon procedures in our Board Policy Manual, we will use a nomination and voting process to select both the President and the Vice President of the Board this year. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Next on the agenda is public comment. At least, we do not have any, we do not have any public comment this evening, so we will move on to board commentary. No? Okay, all right. If there's not any, you have something? No? Okay, all right, no board commentary, so the next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Consent agenda items are those that are considered routine and are adopted by one motion unless any Board Member or the Superintendent requests that an item be removed. The items or items removed are voted on separately, and I believe we have an item to be removed this evening?
Yes. Hi, this is Carol. I respectfully ask that we remove item 2.22, the School Resource Officer MOU, for further discussion.
Thank you, Carol. Can we place that under new business after we, as item number four, after the candidate interviews? Okay, great, thank you. Any other items? Okay, then we have, we will need the amended motion. If someone would like to read that motion, please?
I move the Board of Education adopt the items listed on the consent agenda with the exception of item 2.22.
Erica's second.
Van?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Cadu Blackwood?
Yes.
Gordon Ross?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Kimball?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, we will move on to old business. And our old business this evening is the conclusion of our Board candidate interview and selection process. I want to thank the candidates again who are here this evening for the interviews. I'm going to go over the process just briefly, and then we will have the candidates wait in the old boardroom while we begin the interview process. So as a reminder to the community, I just need to find my notes. As a reminder to the community, Kay Emerson resigned from the Board at the end of May. So at our May 31st Board meeting, we accepted that resignation and approved a draft application and publishing a notice of vacancy. That vacancy notice was posted for the public and published in the Journal World for 15 days. Our application deadline was June 13th. We received eight applications before the deadline. The Board met in a special meeting on June 20th and reviewed those eight applications and selected our four candidates who are with us this evening for interviews this evening. Our process will be as follows. We will, we have a set of questions that will be asked. There will be six questions total. Each candidate will have two minutes for each question, and we will have them come in one at a time. After they have concluded their interview, they can stay in the boardroom, and we will bring in the next candidate. At the conclusion of the interviews, we will have board discussion if there is any. in the old boardroom while we begin the interview process. So as a reminder to the community, I just need to find my notes. As a reminder to the community, Kay Emerson resigned from the board at the end of May. So at our May 31st board meeting, we accepted that resignation and approved a draft application and publishing a notice of vacancy. That vacancy notice was posted for the public and published in the Journal World for 15 days. Our application deadline was June 13th. We received eight applications before the deadline. The board met in a special meeting on June 20th and reviewed those eight applications and selected our four candidates who are with us this evening for interviews this evening. Our process will be as follows. We will, we have a set of questions that will be asked. There will be six questions total. Each candidate will have two minutes for each question, and we will have them come in one at a time. After they have concluded their interview, they can stay in the boardroom, and we will bring in the next candidate. At the conclusion of the interviews, we will have board discussion, if there is any, and then we have ballots for the board to fill out. This is a ranked choice voting ballot process, so board members are asked to rank all four candidates, one through four. And when your ballot is completed, Elise will collect them, and we will, we will take a brief recess to allow the board clerk to tally the votes. When we come back from that recess, she will announce the result of the voting, and the candidate with the most votes from that process will then ask a board member to make a motion to nominate and select that candidate as the new board member. Before the meeting began this evening, I met with the candidates and had them draw numbers, and so the order of the interviews will be Bob Byers, then Paul Carter, then Rebecca Gassen, and then Rachel Thomas. So at this time, if I could ask, Kelly Jones will escort our candidates to the legacy, Learning and Legacy Room for you to wait, and then when it's your turn for the interview, I will come and bring you back into the board meeting, board meeting room.
Shannon?
Yes.
The last time we went through this, we, the candidates did six questions and then a personal statement? Is this just six questions?
Well, the last question is the personal statement.
Okay.
Yep. And when Kelly comes back, I just wanted to share a couple of things about the question selection process and one other item. Thank you, Kelly. Okay, so board members, as we did when we went through this process last year, board officers worked together to craft a slate of questions, which are on the sheet in front of you this evening. I proposed that we use the same process that we did last time, which is that each board member will read one question, and we'll just, so I'll read the first question, and we'll just go down, down the row, and we'll do that for each of the candidates. So Kelly has the closing statement. Any other things you would like to add, kind of question? Elise is going to time each response for two minutes. I shared that with the candidates ahead of time, that they would have two minutes for each question to respond. Just for your convenience, you don't have to use this, but there is a note-taking sheet for you to use if you would like. Just also wanted to share with the board that board officers did do some spot checking of references and had nothing that we felt like needed to be shared from that. It was a very smooth process, but we did, we did do that, so I wanted to make sure everybody knew that. So I think, do board members have any questions about the questions, or the process, or the balloting process before we get started? No? Okay. All right, then I am going to go invite Bob to join us.
Do you want me to grab him, Shannon?
Yeah, actually, if you want to do that, that'd be great. Thank you. Yes. Dr. Lewis, let's start to us.
Is the supply card that you mentioned, is Native American students included in that?
Over there.
Or are they on their separate drive?
Yep.
They're included in that?
Okay. Okay. Elise? Are the questions on the podium? Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening, Bob. Thank you for being here. As you can see, there's a, there's a copy of the six questions on the podium for you to use. If you want to take notes, is there a pen up there?
No, but I can grab it.
There's a pencil.
There's a pencil? Okay. Okay. I just wanted to make sure if you wanted to jot anything down. So we're each going to ask you one question. You'll have two minutes for each question, and we'll just go down the row. So are we ready to get started? Okay. All right. The first question we have for you this evening is, why do you want to serve on the USD 497 Board of Education?
Well, actually, and I've asked myself that question a number of times. Actually, my reason right now is, is I've spent 40-plus years in Lawrence, and a lot of that time I've been involved in the Lawrence School District at, on different levels. And this, to me, is a continuation of that experience. It's a continuation of allowing me to serve the community. And I think I've done, like I say, I've been, since I've been in Lawrence, working with the district, I think the only two things I have not done has been an employee and a student. Other than that, I've done, I've been involved in about every other facet of the district, and this seems to me to be an extension of that.
Thank you.
What role do you hope to play on the board and why?
Actually, my role, for me, is, is when I look at myself, I think I bring a unique view to the board and would, would present, be able to aid the board in discussions of a lot of different and varying options. Obviously, I've been a board member before, so I understand, but, you know, finance. I'm also a systems person, so I tend to deal with, with problems and issues when you look at it through a systemic lens. So it's understanding how to apply that to a board, to the board, and I think that would be a valuable addition.
Thank you. The board is often faced with competing priorities and values from stakeholders across the community. How will you approach your role as a board member in balancing these competing interests? Consider the state's restraints on district finance, financial resources, the district's strategic plan and priorities, and the board's fiduciary duties to students and staff.
Well, again, for me, it comes down to having that perspective of dealing with organizations and structure around systems and how, how different portions of a system affect that, the whole system. And I think doing that, you realize that there are always competing demands, although it is not one against the other, because all of, like for a school district, staff, be it administration, teachers, support staff, are all important. One is not, to me, more important than the other, but they're all important. So it's really more how to figure out, when you have to look at resources, how to sort through it as to what to do. And I think I can bring some interesting perspectives to that.
Hi, this is Carol. What is the top educational priority you want the board to accomplish while you're in office, and why is it most important?
For me, it's educating kids, keeping them safe. And to me, that is what is most important, are those two things, is educating them and making sure that they are safe.
Can you clarify just a little bit more on how you would keep them safe?
Well, really, one of the functions of school is to give a child a place where they can be secure and feel safe. Does that help explain it?
Maybe inclusion or physical safety?
I think it's a bit of both, because, because a lot of keeping kids safe is to give them a place where they feel secure, obviously, a place where they know they can go and be protected, a place where they know that they can go, and if they need help, they can ask for it and know that someone will be listening and help them.
All right, thank you.
Skills, experiences, and expertise do you have to offer to help the district navigate through these challenging and rapidly changing times?
Well, educationally, I'm a master's-level social worker, have had 40 years of experience directly in child welfare, program development, budgeting at the state level and the local level, and as well as program development. I also have experience of years of working directly with this district, was a board member for a four-year, full four-year term, and then also stepped in to fill a vacancy for a year, year. I've had years of experience in dealing with, getting to understand how school finance actually works, and I think it's something that I would bring to the board.
Thank you.
Do you have a final statement or something you would like to share that we have not touched on before we conclude the interview?
Well, really, for me, it's an honor to be asked to interview. I turned in my application, and to me, just being selected to be one of the four to interview is, is a big deal. So I'd like to first say thank you very much. Whether I get on the board or not, to me, this is special. Other than that, I do think that I will bring a unique perspective if you select me, that I think I can offer you some assistance in making, helping the board make decisions. And other than that, like I say, my most important thing for me is working inside the community and continuing to do that.
Thank you. So very much appreciate it.
May I leave these? Okay, I'll take the one.
Okay, great. Do you want to invite Paul in next? Good evening, Paul.
Sorry, but it's that time.
I understand, trust me. Thank you for being here this evening and welcome. We will each read a question, and I will start with the first question, which is, why do you want to serve on the USD 497 Board of Education?
Well, that's pretty straightforward in my case, because, of course, it was one of the, the, the application questions, so it's something that I've given quite a lot of thought to. And I concluded that it really came down to two things. One is, I think, a profound appreciation for the challenges that the district now faces, which are, you know, there are many, they're significant, oftentimes interrelated, in many instances unprecedented, a function of a lot of different things, whether it's, you know, the COVID phenomenon, or demographics, or politics, or, or what have you. And you all have the, you know, the joy and responsibility of having to sort that through. So I have profound respect for the challenges that the district faces and that you all, in particular, are confronted with having to, to address. So that's one thing. The other thing is that I, I believe that my somewhat unusual background, which has involved a lot of places, a lot of responsibilities, a lot of roles, a lot of types of decisions addressed, a lot of activities and so forth, actually equips me distinctively well to be a, an asset to all of you as this team moves forward trying to solve these myriad challenges.
Thank you.
What role do you hope to play on the board and why?
I hope to play a role on this board that would be a constructive, proactive, value-added team member. Again, I think the, the problems are very substantial. You all have volunteered to take this on, but you are, you know, by law and practice, left with the job of getting this done. And you now have one empty chair, and you get to fill it. And so you're really in an extraordinary position where, you know, without elections or any, any of this other kind of rigmarole or noise in the system or whatever, you get to look at four very qualified candidates, each of whom bring different things potentially to it, and you get to decide who you want on your team to help you attack, tackle these challenges. And so the role that, that I would intend to play is defined by exactly that. A member of a team who hopefully brings some distinctive capabilities, experiences, whatnot, that is a supplement to all of you in trying to push forward to achieve the mission of the district.
The board is often faced with competing priorities and values from stakeholders across the community. What will you, how will you approach your role as a board member in balancing these competing interests? Consider the state's restraints on district financial resources, the district's strategic priorities, and the board's fiduciary duties to students and staff.
I've been a member of this community for a long time, and I think this is something else I mentioned in the, in my, you know, application. I mean, the, the blessing of Lawrence is also arguably its curse, which is we have so many people in this community who care deeply about the schools, everything else, about sidewalks, about this, that, the other thing. They care deeply. And a lot of them are not at all reluctant to express their opinions and assert their will in ways that they think are most constructive. That's fantastic. You can't, you know, if, if, if the citizenry doesn't really care, there's not much you can do to make them care. Our citizenry cares. At the same time, the differences are, you know, are pretty significant in a lot of respects. What I have found over the course of my career as a problem solver of complex problems for primarily social purpose organizations is that the shortest path to, to building consensus starts at the top with the most basic questions of goals and priorities, like, what are we actually trying to achieve? And how do we know? What does it look like? What does success actually look like? And how can we be as specific as possible in codifying what these goals are and what success looks like, such that we can actually establish a very firm foundation for everything that follows? And everything that follows is the process then of, if we can get clarity about our, our purpose and destination, is identifying options, sorting through options, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. But I have rarely found it impossible to get people together on goals. And if you do that, good stuff can happen.
Thank you. This is Carol. What is the top-
And a lot of them are not at all reluctant to express their opinions and assert their will in ways that they think are most constructive. I mean, that's fantastic. You can't, you know, if, if, if the citizenry doesn't really care, there's not much you can do to make them care. Our citizenry cares. At the same time, the differences are, you know, are pretty significant in a lot of respects. What I have found over the course of my career as a problem solver of complex problems for primarily social purpose organizations is that the shortest path to, to building consensus starts at the top with the most basic questions of goals and priorities, like, what are we actually trying to achieve? And how do we know? What does it look like? What does success actually look like? And how can we be as specific as possible in codifying what these goals are and what success looks like, such that we can actually establish a very firm foundation for everything that follows? And everything that follows is the process then of, if we can get clarity about our, our purpose and destination, is identifying options, sorting through options, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. But I have rarely found it impossible to get people together on goals. And if you do that, good stuff can happen.
Thank you. This is Carol. What is the top educational priority you want the board to accomplish while you're in office, and why is it most, why is it the most important?
I, I, here, I, I, I'm gonna maybe cheat a little bit, because I think there are three. I mean, you guys have outlined the promise. And to my mind, the promise is super robust. Reading proficiency at third grade, math proficiency at eighth grade, graduation on-time, career college-ready. Okay, so I can't honestly say that one stands out over the others, other than to observe that there's a, there's a time dynamic, right? So the, you know, the first thing, the first test of the promise is reading proficiency at third grade. The next test, just time-wise, would be, you know, math proficiency at eighth, and then ultimately, are the students able, building on that, to not only graduate on time, but actually to be ready? I mean, forget their test scores. Are they actually ready to move forward with, you know, with building a life and career for themselves? So I think those, I think those goals are sound. Going back to what I just said, too, I think that is a, you know, a, a very strong place from which to start in building this whole, you know, sequence of other things. If we get everybody on, you know, on the same page there and codify what that actually means, understand where we actually are now in achieving that, and therefore, where we're far, where we're close, and so forth, and out of that, then define specific initiatives that we believe are actually likely to move the dial, then I think, you know, we're, we're well-positioned for, for a great success.
Thank you.
What skills, experiences, and expertise do you have to offer to help the district navigate through these challenging and rapidly changing times?
Well, I'm, you, you, I have actually prepared specifically for this question as part of my closing remarks, okay? So I'm guessing that I may save a lot of time in my closing remarks. But I, I, I do think that, that, you know, my background is different. I'm, I'm very similar to each and every one of you in many fundamental respects. But my career has been much different in many respects, too. And one of the most significant is that I have had the privilege, ever since, you know, for literally 40 years, of having as my profession the challenge of helping complex organizations figure out how to be successful, what success means, and helping them mobilize the resources and wherewithal to achieve their goals. Over the last 25 years, my focus has been exclusively social purpose organizations. In 2000, I left the private sector to be a co-founder of an organization called The Bridgespan Group, which is now, as far as I know, the most significant nonprofit consulting firm in the United States. And that really kind of propelled me, jet-propelled me into the nonprofit sector as my focus, professional focus. So basically, I, I did what I had done before, which is, is focus all of my capabilities on helping organizations, social purpose organizations that are intending, whose success is defined by driving social impact, to understand what it is they're capable of doing, understanding what they need to do it, what resources they have, what resources they don't have, and so forth, and then marshal all this, so that hopefully you are, you know, at the end of the day, well-positioned for success. I'd say that's my kind of defining professional goal.
So, Paul, I, you might not have much to add, you've said, but do you have a final statement or something you would like to share that we have not touched on before we conclude the interview?
I do, as a matter of fact, which actually echoes most of these, these things. And I'm, I'm gonna sort of read it, because I have a tendency toward some degree of verbocity, and so, given the time limitation, I'm gonna just zoom through this. But so like, so let's start with the fact that, you know, like, that USD 97, like most districts, has major issues that we're confronting. But you know, there are almost 14,000 public school districts in the United States. We are not alone. But again, you now have this extraordinary opportunity to pick, to fill that chair. And you get to just decide what, what it is, where you're strong, where you're, you're not feeling so strong, and whatever you feel you need to, you know, to bring to bear, to strengthen your team, so that you can be most effective as possible in, in addressing the goals for the districts. And I would highlight now, just, you've got great choices. We're all a little different, let me highlight how I am different. And the first thing I'd say is, is connectedness with this community and this district. And, you know, like Ms. Van and Ms. Kadoo Blackwood, I'm a Lawrence native, I went to Lawrence Public Schools, I'm a parent of public schools' children, I was, spent my early years in North Lawrence, Lawrence Community Nursery School, I went to kindergarten at New York School, then we moved to Barker Avenue, half-block from Haskell, I went to Cordley Central LHS. And my mother was a chronic PTA member, Board of Education member, teacher, and now Lawrence is home to not only myself and my wife, but all five of my siblings, three of whom I'm pleased to say are here tonight, and all 17 of our children attended Lawrence Public Schools. So I am totally committed to this district, and I'm pleased to say that, at this point in my life, I have the, the desire and the commitment to be as effective a member of your team as possible if you choose to allow me that opportunity. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Paul. Appreciate your time. Hello. Hi. Good evening, Rebecca, thank you for being here. So we will each ask a question, and I will start. So the first question this evening is, why do you want to serve on the USD 497 Board of Education?
So I think, I think there's a lot of reasons. I think, so I'm a relatively new parent, my daughter just finished first grade, so we had one real year, I think, and then we had the kindergarten year was still kind of a COVID year, so we didn't really get to experience the school the way we did this last year where we made connections. And I think, I think there's a lot of great things about the district, but there's also places I see that I, I wanna kind of help with some improvements or opportunities. So serving on the Equity Advisory Committee this year was a, a great experience, but it's, it's, it always makes me think of things that I'm like, well, maybe we could change this a little bit. So one of the ideas was truancy, like, there's been some discussions about truancies, and my background being an attorney in child welfare, and I, I've represented kids in truancy cases before, and it's, you know, taking those to court is not productive. Is that one? Just saw the timer. So if there's ways we can maybe bring in community resources to help families kind of at that initial point when they're, the kids are maybe missing a few days, things like that, just can I help connect community resources to the, the schools or other, that's just one example, but other reasons, I think, you know, I really believe in public education, and I, I wanna kind of help Lawrence, I think from a statewide perspective, too. Like, I've worked at state agencies, or a state agency, but I, when I was at DCF, I got to serve on the Governor's Council for Education in the Early Childhood Subcommittee, and so I was able to kind of meet people from other districts. And I think if we're able to make those connections, we can kind of get best practices that we can try out here, too. So those are just some of the reasons.
Thank you.
What role do you hope to play on the board and why?
So I think one of the things I talked about in the previous question, kind of being an ideas person, I think, could be part of it, but I also wanna be somebody who knows the budget rules, knows the district's budget, kind of inside and out, but also understands, I know, with all the different pots of money, you know, where can we maybe bring in partner funding when possible, and also help to communicate those, like, limits and requirements to members of the community, so maybe they can help identify funds or raise funds as appropriate, but also just better understand the limitations that the board has when voting on budgets. And so, so I think, like, things like that can help, like, rebuild trust with the community if people understand why we're making the decisions we're making.
The board is often faced with competing priorities and values from stakeholders across the community. What will, how will you approach your role as a board member in balancing these competing interests? Consider the state's restraints on district financial resources, the district's strategic priorities, and the board's fiduciary duties to students and staff.
I think, you know, I think it's, it's gonna be sort of an ongoing, probably, decision-making process. So every, every issue's gonna be a little bit different. But I think doing your homework, you know, reading everything that you're sent before meetings, of course, but also having conversations with community members, and not just the ones that know to reach out to you, but also, like, making an effort to talk to people who maybe are less likely to have their voices heard, parents who work evenings, or weekends, or families, like, obviously, we don't, we won't know who the families who get free and reduced lunch are, but, but making sure, maybe going to places where, where resources are available, like Just Food, or, or something like that. So like, you're making yourself available to families and asking them about how things are affecting them. I, I think, I think, to me, you know, looking at the families that are most impacted by votes will be a focus that, that I'll probably bring to every decision.
Thank you. This is Carol. What is the top educational priority you want the board to accomplish while you're in office, and why is it most important?
So I don't have an agenda, but I do have some things that I would hope would improve while I'm on the board. So, like, equity, like, there's no such thing as achieving equity, you're always just improving equity to, to make things more equitable. So I think just making sure that that's a focus, and we're looking through, at every decision through that equity lens, is really important to me. Looking at, not just looking at the equity data, but I guess, you know, trying to understand why those disparities are there, and then what do we need to be doing to decrease the disparities? And if we're, if what we're doing isn't working, like, let's keep trying new things until we find something that is effective.
Thank you.
What skills, experiences, and expertise do you have to offer to help the district navigate through these challenging and rapidly changing times?
So I'm kind, I'm pretty well-rounded, I like to think, I guess. So I, my professional background, I'm a lawyer, I practiced for eight years, and then I did, like, policy for eight years. So I got to do, like, legislative advocacy, and I did administrative advocacy, and I actually worked quite a bit on child nutrition programs when I was at Kansas Appleseed. And, I mean, I think those are such a big equity driver, because, you know, you're helping, you're making sure children have the nutrition that they need to be able to learn. So that experience, and then I worked at DCF. On the exec team, I was Director of Policy and Director of Economic and Employment Services, and we were trying to undo some of the, the Hope Act restrictions that cut back access to public benefits, and we were somewhat successful, but we also, we, we had a legislature that didn't want us to be successful. I think other experiences that I've had, I, I think the state-level experience and the, kind of this combination of state-level and community-level experience, I think, gives me sort of a unique perspective or perspectives. I think my experience working on budgets at the state level, I think, will be helpful, too. Let's see, like, the state budgeting process is fascinating and complex, and if you go to the hearings at the very end, it's almost like a game, kind of watching, it's like keeping stats at a baseball game. But also, like, the TANF budgeting process was really interesting, like, the state gets $100 million of federal funding for TANF, and, you know, kind of seeing where that money's going and, and doing some thinking about, like, what are the efficient ways to use those monies? So I think, I don't know, I've been around a little bit, I, I feel like I, I understand how to connect the dots in a lot of ways, so I think that could be valuable.
Thank you.
So this is the wrap-up question, so you've done really well. Do you have a final statement or something you would like to share that we have not touched on before we conclude the interview?
So, excuse me, I think something that I talked about in my application that I haven't talked about tonight, I don't think very much, is just wanting to bring more of the focus about collaborating with the community. I think, like, as a Pinckney parent, I felt pretty powerless to, like, the decisions that were being made, and, and I think I, I wanted to, I wanted to, like, be given an assignment or something, like, how can we, how can we support the school, you know, if it's, if it's gonna close next year or not? Like, how can we, are there ways, are there things we could do to keep the school open? If not, like, how can we support the school now? How can we support the families? And this is something we can still work on, how can we support those families as they transition to new schools? And make sure that the kids who really need those additional resources to adjust to their new schools are getting them. And I think, I think there's a lot of community members in this community that would love to kind of be given a role to play in that. So, you know, maybe it's sort of volunteering in the school, maybe it's volunteering at a lunch site. So like, and that's something I've personally done. Last year, I wanted Pinckney to have a summer meal site, so I reached out to the district. It wasn't feasible last year, so I worked with harvesters to set up a site near Pinckney, we had it at Clinton Park. It wasn't very successful, I think we didn't have good, we didn't have the quality of food that the district offers, and I think there were some other things about it that didn't work well. So this year, was so excited that Julie Henry and her team were able to partner with us, and we have the breakfast site at Pinckney, and it's been so much fun to, like, just, you know, take some meals there, meet up with families, the kids play on the playground, which in the summer, you always need things to keep your kids entertained. So just having that opportunity to, like, have a meal together, play on the playground, reconnect, you know, things like that, I think there's a lot of people that would love to do things like that, if they just knew that those opportunities might be available.
Thank you very much. Okay, I'm gonna go get Rachel. Thank you.
Hello?
Hi, Rachel. Thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you.
So there's a copy of the questions on the podium, and Elise will have the time.
And Elise will have the timer. I will start with the first question. You'll have two minutes to answer each of the questions. And we're just going to go down the row and ask the, ask you each of the questions. So I will get started. The first question this evening is, why do you want to serve on the USD 497 Board of Education?
I care deeply about our students, to put it simply. But I also care about our community. And I know that this has been a tumultuous last couple of years. And I kept doing the volunteer work in our scholarship group. I kept watching the board meetings and writing emails to some of you, watching some of the state legislator meetings and just cringing a little bit when they talk about funding for education. And I kept saying, why isn't anybody stepping up? Especially somebody from my community, from the Hispanic Latinx community. And I kept waiting and I kept waiting. And then this application came and I just asked, why not me? That's why I'm here today and that's why I want to serve. Because I believe in our students and I want to be a part of helping them succeed and achieve.
Thank you.
What role do you hope to play on the board and why?
Hopefully, an additional perspective. I feel that not just with my background, but in my work previously with KASB and now with a national education nonprofit, I can bring perspective of what other districts are doing that's working to help us innovate efficiently. But also as somebody who has worked in the district and been a staff member, been in our buildings and talked to our students and our teachers and our staff members, I've gotten perspective over what's working and what might not be working and where some of our silos exist. And so I hope that as a board member, I can lend that perspective, but also be a good teammate because the board is a team and I believe in that.
The board is often faced with competing priorities and values from stakeholders across the community. How will you approach your role as a board member in balancing these competing interests? Consider the state's restraints on district financial resources, the district's strategic priorities, and the board's fiduciary duties to students and staff.
I think when you look at the desired outcomes of our strategic plan, you know, reading proficiency by third grade, math proficiency by eighth grade, and college and career, career-ready in a global economy. And you weigh that with some of the student data that we've seen, especially, you know, our student discipline data that motivated a lot of our restorative justice work and how they're achieving in different interim and summative assessments. The priorities kind of rank themselves. And that would be my guiding principle as we made budgetary decisions, policy decisions. Because I think when you keep those desired outcomes and those goals in mind, things start to fall in line.
Thank you. This is Carol. What is the top educational priority you want the board to accomplish while you're in office? And why is it the most important?
I think for me, we're coming at the end of what was supposed to be a five-year strategic plan. And I want to be a part of the work to analyze, you know, what worked, what didn't work, and what we need to continue in the next few years. Especially given, as said in the previous question, you know, the budgetary shortfalls that we have, the limited resources that we have because of the state. And so that is the top educational priority to me is continuing the work of the strategic plan, looking at the ways that it was efficient and looking at the ways that we can continue to improve.
Thank you.
Thanks, Carol.
What skills, experiences, and expertise do you have to offer to help the district navigate through these challenging and rapidly changing times?
I am knowledgeable about board governance. And I've been in the State House advocating for our students when it comes to funding or harmful bills that may hurt our most vulnerable students. So I have that perspective and knowledge. But I've worked for the last five years as a communication professional in various levels of education. And so I have hopefully the experience of a good communicator. I mean, they keep hiring me. But also the experience to tell our story and to talk about our students passionately, succinctly, and to get to the point.
Okay. Thank you. This is the wrap-up question. Do you have a final statement or something you would like to share that we have not touched on before we conclude the interview?
I know you all have a difficult decision tonight. And I know that's not dissimilar to a lot of times you all have sat in this room. I know that the board also faces numerous challenges after the couple of years that we've had amidst an election year in a state that hasn't had a good track record funding education, amidst a national teacher shortage. The list can go on. I'm aware of the challenges that we face and I'm ready to meet them. I've done the work within small sectors of our community and I'm committed to doing the work at this level. And I know that if you picked me as the next board member, you would be getting somebody who has the knowledge and the experience and the structures that contribute to funding and board governance. But you would also be picking somebody with a new and different perspective and voice that hasn't been seen on the board and isn't on the board currently. So I hope that I can prove that to you.
Thank you very much. Okay. So before the board gets started with the next part of this process, I want to thank again each of our candidates who came and interviewed this evening. As I was saying to them earlier, and I'll say it again, it's probably the most awkward thing to ever ask people to do to come and do what amounts to a job interview in a public meeting televised on YouTube for anyone to see, preserved for posterity. And so I just want to say that you are all outstanding candidates. And I'm very appreciative of your interest in serving on this board and your commitment to the community. So with that being said, we can open it up for board discussion, comments, thoughts. I'm also open to a request if the board would like to take a recess for a period of time to work through the, the notes and materials in preparation for voting. We can, we can do that.
Just because of the caliber of the candidates, I need a minute to collect my thoughts. These are really highly qualified people and I would gladly serve with any of them. So I just need a minute to rank. So I'd like time to think.
Does anybody have anything they would like to say before a call or recess? And how long do you think, Kelly? I'm, I'm thinking 10 minutes?
I have 15.
15 minutes? I think that would be appropriate. I will echo what you said. We're, we are, we are very fortunate to have the candidates that we have, have speak to us this evening. And I, I too, I think, need some time to really work through my notes and thoughts in order to be able to complete the ballot.
This is Carol. I would just, you know, like to thank every, each and every applicant who applied to, you know, be on the school board. This is, as you all know, that, and we know, this is a tough job. And it's one of volunteerism. It's a big, it's a huge commitment. So I would like to thank everybody for coming. Because as we've seen nationwide, especially during and after the pandemic, we've seen superintendents leave their districts. We've seen board members resign. And in the neighboring district of Kansas City, there were some seats that were unchallenged. So I think, I think this is very telling that of Lawrencians, as Mr. Carter said, you know, we are very involved in our, our town and we care about our community. So thank you.
Absolutely. Okay. Yes.
Just a brief comment. Everyone know I don't get a vote in this, but I will say that I'm very hopeful and optimistic about the future of this district. The four candidates that came before us tonight proved that. And so I just want to send my thanks to you, but also to plug the Superintendent Advisory Council. Although we don't have four seats open right now, only one is selected. I would encourage the other three to begin to think about additional roles that you may find here in the district. I know many of you have served on previous committees, but I am offering my Superintendent Advisory Council as one of those additional options for you.
Thank you, Dr. Lewis. I'm going to call a 15-minute recess. I am going to caution board members because we need to be doing all of our deliberating and discussing in public to stay away from each other for the next 15 minutes while we take this recess and do our work individually. And then we will come back together at 7:31 and have any further discussion and then do our balloting. So the board is in recess until 7:31. Thank you.
Recession at this time, is there additional board discussion? Kelly?
I guess I'll just add, I said this the last time we met and I'll just add it now. For me, when I look at how I rank candidates, I continue to prioritize, just thinking about needing to step into this role and be able to go immediately, I continue to prioritize the amount of experience a person has within the district and their knowledge of, while still balancing other skill sets that folks might bring to the table and gaps where they can fill, just speaking as the individual for whom I'm the for sure board member here at the end of the day, I really would appreciate if my board colleagues, if you all would consider candidates that understand how the district operates, the knowledge around the decisions we have to make and that type, and that experience while not discounting what other people have brought to the table. So for me, that's the priority while fully acknowledging this was an incredible group of people that bring different things to the table and I know you all might have a different priority, I just wanted to share that's where mine is at.
Thank you, Kelly. I will add that experience with the district is also have been a very important consideration in my thinking. I've also been focused on aspects of people's experience that demonstrate, experience with board governance, systems thinking, a focus on strategic planning, but also unique experiences and perspectives that are, that would be an added benefit to the experiences and perspectives that we already have at the table. So those are some of the criteria, those are the criteria that I have looked at in trying to figure out how to prioritize and rank the candidates that we've interviewed. If there's not any additional board commentary, I want to make sure everybody has an opportunity to say what they want to say.
This is Carol. Yeah, I continue to use the rubric that Kelly had mentioned, but also what I consider is the ties to Lawrence and Dr. Gott used the word meaningful. And so I use that in my decision making to consider who was able to, and we have such a robust pool of candidates, but at the end of the day, I had to look at the one who is able to look upstream and to find out where these problems get to, who was able to get to the root of the problem. And while understanding systems and how they work and intersect. Thank you.
Okay. If there's no additional comment, then I will ask Elise to pass out the ballots to board members. Please write your name at the top of the ballot. You must rank all four candidates, one through four. When you have completed that ranking, please place it face down on the table. Elise will pick them up and then we will call another five-minute recess for Elise to tally the rankings. Elise, are all the ballots properly completed? Okay. We will call an additional five-minute recess. The board will reconvene at 7:42. Thank you. Thank you. of how the ballots should be tallied in the final, in the final tally. So, thank you for your patience while we ensured that we were following our procedures as the board had adopted them. And I will ask our board clerk to please read the votes and the tally results.
Each board member has ranked the candidates as follows. Shannon Kimball, her first-place vote was Paul Carter. Second place, Bob Myers. Third place, Rachel Thomas. Did I do it again? I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Bob. Bob Byers. Third place, Rachel Thomas. Fourth place, Rebecca Gaston. Paula Van, her first place was Rachel Thomas. Second place, Rebecca Gaston. Third place, Bob Byers. Fourth place, Paul Carter. Erica Hill, first place, Paul Carter. Second place, Rachel Thomas. Third place, Bob Byers. Fourth place, Rebecca Gaston. Carol Cadu Blackwood, her first place was Rebecca Gaston. Second place, Paul Carter. Third place, Bob Byers. Fourth place, Paul Carter. Kelly Jones, her first place was Bob Byers. Second place, Rachel Thomas. Third place, Rebecca Gaston. Fourth place, Paul Carter. Each candidate's first-place votes totals are as follows. Bob Byers, two first-place votes. Rachel Thomas, one first-place vote. Rebecca Gaston, one first-place vote. And Paul Carter, two first-place votes, which gives us a tie. And we move on to the second votes. Bob Byers has one second vote, second-place vote, and Paul Carter has one second-place vote, which gives us another tie. And we move on to the third-place vote. Bob Byers has three third-place votes and Paul Carter has zero third-place votes. The winner would be Bob Byers.
Thank you for reading the tally. At this time, I would ask for a motion. And if you refresh Board docs, there is a motion in Board docs.
I move the Board of Education appoint Bob Byers to fill the board vacancy through January 2026.
Second.
Hill?
Yes.
Cadu Blackwood?
Yes.
Gordon Ross?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Kimball?
Yes.
Motion passes six-zero.
Congratulations, Bob. And congratulations to all the candidates. This was obviously a very difficult decision and I appreciate each and every one of you and thank you. Please continue to stay engaged. We need engaged members of our community in all kinds of ways, now more than ever. And so, I just want to share my appreciation for all of you. Any additional comments from board members?
I would just echo that. Having just gone through this process, I understand what you just went through, just on both sides of it. And so, I applaud your willingness to go through this process. I'll echo what Shannon said of coming out here and doing this interview in public. It's, it's a little awkward. It's a little weird, but it was, it was a very difficult choice and it was great to see the four of you bringing a unique skill set, which made it that much harder to pick from. So, I was grateful for that. So, I'm grateful for your willingness to serve and I'll echo Shannon's invitation and Dr. Lewis's invitation to stay involved and to continue to look for ways to serve the school district.
Okay. And with that, that concludes this item of board business. Bob, we need talk. So, if, if you're able to stick around till after the end of the meeting, we will do some planning. So, okay, great. Thank you. Okay. It feels a little bit hard to move on, actually, to our next business item, I have to admit. Okay. We did have one item pulled from the consent agenda this evening and that was our school resource officer MOU. Carol, would open the floor to you so you can share with us your questions or thought process. Thank you.
Sure. Exactly. Thank you. Thank you again. This is Carol. Just had to catch my thoughts here. Let's see. I requested that the board pull the MOU for just, you know, just further clarification because I do, I applaud this, these, the, I have nothing, I'm, I support our school SROs, but I would just like some clarification on the MOU, maybe some of the, well, the rationale here, but just more for the purpose of transparency. So, specifically, I would like to look at section two, number five on the MOU. Let's see, on the M. "SROs will present programs to USD 497 parents in the community on issues related to tobacco, alcohol, and other drugs, violence, prevention, and safety." Is that something where the, the SROs or the police department will give us presentations? Is that something that is planned to give presentations to board members?
No, that was to students at the middle and high schools and as requested at the elementary level.
Okay. All right. And let's see. And also, is that part of the jewel settlement?
Now, I will say they did add, this one, they did add community members in this one as well. When we think about safety, they will also be willing to provide presentations to the community members.
Okay, thanks. And also, is this part of the jewel settlement, the 284,000? Is that, are those funds going to be used towards this effort?
The instructional effort from SROs?
Yes.
No, not at this.
Because it says, "prevention, violence on issues related to tobacco, alcohol, and other drugs." So, does that include part of the jewel settlement?
Well, it could be. It could be. I will say that the jewel settlement has to be used for the purposes of that prevention, educating. The police department has their own programs and things that they present to scholars and as it relates to nicotine or violence and things like that. However, if there was a program that through our consultation with the police department that we wanted to purchase that addresses nicotine use, we could use the jewel money for that.
Okay, great. Thank you. And I ask this because I, I'm actually a certified tobacco treatment specialist, so I, I'm so excited about this. I mean, it's an epidemic. So, and also, number 11, "SROs will attend off-campus USD 497-sponsored and related meetings and activities, including staff and services and parent group meetings as requested." So, again, is that something where the SROs will, and I'm thinking, and I'm thinking about from the lens of the SROs because I know they have a tough job and there's a lot of miscommunication and a lot of misconceptions about SROs in schools. So, it would be a great opportunity for the SROs to come to the board and, you know, tell us what's working and what's not working. So, I, is that something that we're going to start doing with this MOU?
Yeah, and I think we've already been doing, I think a perfect example of that was our community conversations on safety when our SROs presented to community members at, at both sites, both high schools. If there's other staff in services that administration would like SROs to attend or if they say, hey, could we attend this and give a presentation on X, then collaboratively they will work with the administrators at the schools to present that. And Officer Wiltz is here. She was heavily involved in the development of the MOU. If anything you would like to add, please feel free to step up.
Good evening. So, number 11 was for any activities that administrators ask us to attend. Sometimes it's the PD days at the beginning of the school year just to explain our role to new staff members. Sometimes it's football games between two specific schools. We just didn't want to take that away from administrators to request us at, whenever they want us. So, that's what number 11 was for.
Okay, thanks. And I also think it'd be a great opportunity for, you know, just with the police departments, this is not just isolated to Lawrence, but nationwide where there is a distrust with the community, especially the BIPOC community. So, I, I would think it would be great for everybody. It's a win-win for the, the SROs, the police, and the students to see that role, the role modeling, if you will.
Absolutely. So, we're happy to give presentations to anybody that requests our services. We did the fentanyl presentation here into every school. So, yeah, we're happy to do it. If you guys want us to come in and tell you what we do, we're all about it.
Super thanks. And if, and again, if you have anything that you want to share with us, what's working, what's not working, just please let us know.
Sure. I, I think this year, this is my second year going into my third year in this school district. I think what's working is the relationship we have with the district and the administrators. I mean, it makes our job so much easier. So, I really don't have a lot that's not working right now. We just started our second week of our teen police academy. We have some LHS students and prestate students. And we have 20 kids in that. So, just building those relationships with those kids, it's, it's been great.
All right, thank you. And I, and this is a plug for you, but I know that there are some trainings for SROs where the public can come in. Is, are those in Fort Hays, if you will? I'm not sure.
So, I teach for Nazro as well.
Yes.
They're all over. Our next one is in Derby in the first week of August. And yes, board members, administrators can attend those basic SRO classes, advanced. Yeah, we're happy to have you. So, if you want that schedule, I can send it to the board. It's on Nazro's website. You can attend any of their trainings.
Great. Thank you.
Sure. That's it.
Okay. Great. Any additional questions or commentary from the board? If not, a motion? We'd be ready for a motion.
I move the Board of Education approve the memorandum of understanding MOU between the City of Lawrence, Lawrence Police Department, and Lawrence Public Schools, Unified School District 497.
Erica, second.
Cadu Blackwood?
Yes.
Gordon Ross?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Kimball?
Yes.
Van?
Yes.
Motion passes six-zero.
Congratulations, Bob. And congratulations to all the candidates. This was obviously a very difficult decision and I appreciate each and every one of you and thank you. Please continue to stay engaged. We need engaged members of our community in all kinds of ways, now more than ever. And so, I just want to share my appreciation for all of you. Any additional comments from board members?
I would just echo that. Having just gone through this process, I understand what you just went through, just on both sides of it. And so, I applaud your willingness to, to go through this process. I'll echo what Shannon said of coming out here and doing this interview in public. It's, it's a little awkward. It's a little weird, but it was, it was a very difficult choice and it was great to see the four of you bringing a unique skill set, which made it that much harder to pick from. So, I was grateful for that. So, I'm grateful for your willingness to serve and I'll echo Shannon's invitation and Dr. Lewis's invitation to stay involved and to continue to look for ways to serve the school district.
Okay. And with that, that concludes this item of board business. Bob, we need talk. So, if, if you're able to stick around till after the end of the meeting, we will do some planning. So, okay, great. Thank you. Okay. It feels a little bit hard to move on, actually, to our next business item, I have to admit. Okay. We did have one item pulled from the consent agenda this evening and that was our school resource officer MOU. Carol, would open the floor to you so you can share with us your questions or thought process. Thank you.
Sure. Exactly. Thank you. Thank you again. This is Carol. Just had to catch my thoughts here. Let's see. I requested that the, the board pull the MOU for just, you know, just further clarification because I, I do, I applaud this, these, the, I have nothing, I'm, I support our school SROs, but I would just like some clarification on the MOU, maybe some of the, well, the rationale here, but just more for the purpose of transparency. So, specifically, I would like to look at section two, number five on the MOU. Let's see, on the M. "SROs will present programs to USD 497 parents in the community on issues related to tobacco, alcohol, and other drugs, violence, prevention, and safety." Is that something where the, the SROs or the police department will give us presentations? Is that something that is planned to give presentations to board members?
No, that was to students at the middle and high schools and as, as requested at the elementary level.
Okay. All right. And let's see. And also, is that part of the jewel settlement?
Now, I will say they did add, this one, they did add community members in this one as well. When we think about safety, they will also be willing to provide presentations to the community members.
Okay, thanks. And also, is this part of the jewel settlement, the 284,000? Is that, are those funds going to be used towards this effort?
The instructional effort from SROs?
Yes.
No, not at this.
Because it says, "prevention, violence on issues related to tobacco, alcohol, and other drugs." So, does that include part of the jewel settlement?
Well, it, it could be. It could be. I will say that the jewel settlement has to be used for the purposes of that prevention, educating. The police department has their own programs and things that they present to scholars and as it relates to nicotine or violence and things like that. However, if there was a program that through our consultation with the police department that we wanted to purchase that addresses nicotine use, we could use the jewel money for that.
Okay, great. Thank you. And I ask this because I, I'm actually a certified tobacco treatment specialist, so I, I'm so excited about this. I mean, it's an epidemic. So, and also, number 11, "SROs will attend off-campus USD 497-sponsored and related meetings and activities, including staff and services and parent group meetings as requested." So, again, is that something where the SROs will, and I'm thinking, and I'm thinking about from the lens of the SROs because I know they have a tough job and there's a lot of miscommunication and a lot of misconceptions about SROs in schools. So, it would be a great opportunity for the SROs to come to the board and, you know, tell us what's working and what's not working.
Mm-hmm.
So, I, is that something that we're going to start doing with this MOU?
Yeah, and I think we've already been doing, I think a perfect example of that was our community conversations on safety when our SROs presented to community members at, at both sites, both high schools. If there's other staff in services that administration would like SROs to attend or if they say, hey, could we attend this and give a presentation on X, then collaboratively they will work with the administrators at the schools to present that. And Officer Wiltz is here. She was heavily involved in the development of the MOU. If anything you would like to add, please feel free to step up.
Good evening. So, number 11 was for any activities that administrators ask us to attend. Sometimes it's the PD days at the beginning of the school year just to explain our role to new staff members. Sometimes it's football games between two specific schools. We just didn't want to take that away from administrators to request us at, whenever they want us. So, that's what number 11 was for.
Okay, thanks. And I also think it'd be a great opportunity for, you know, just with the police departments, this is not just isolated to Lawrence, but nationwide where there is a distrust with the community, especially the BIPOC community. So, I, I would think it would be great for everybody. It's a win-win for the, the SROs, the police, and the students to see that role, the role modeling, if you will.
Absolutely. So, we're happy to give presentations to anybody that requests our services. We did the fentanyl presentation here into every school. So, yeah, we're happy to do it. If you guys want us to come in and tell you what we do, we're all about it.
Super thanks. And if, and again, if you have anything that you want to share with us, what's working, what's not working, just please let us know.
Sure. I, I think this year, this is my second year going into my third year in this school district. I think what's working is the relationship we have with the district and the administrators. I mean, it makes our job so much easier. So, I really don't have a lot that's not working right now. We just started our second week of our teen police academy. We have some LHS students and prestate students. And we have 20 kids in that. So, just building those relationships with those kids, it's, it's been great.
All right, thank you. And I, and this is a plug for you, but I know that there are some trainings for SROs where the public can come in. Is, are those in Fort Hays, if you will? I'm not sure.
So, I teach for Nazro as well.
Yes.
They're all over. Our next one is in Derby in the first week of August. And yes, board members, administrators can attend those basic SRO classes, advanced. Yeah, we're happy to have you. So, if you want that schedule, I can send it to the board. It's on Nazro's website. You can attend any of their trainings.
Great. Thank you.
Sure.
Okay. Great. Any additional questions or commentary from the board? If not, a motion? We'd be ready for a motion.
I move the Board of Education approve the memorandum of understanding MOU between the City of Lawrence, Lawrence Police Department, and Lawrence Public Schools, Unified School District 497.
Erica, second.
Cadu Blackwood?
Yes.
Gordon Ross?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Kimball?
Yes.
Van?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Motion passes six-zero.
Thank you. Okay. We're ready for our reports this evening. We have two. Our first is the Safe and Supportive Schools and Equity fourth-quarter update. And Dr. Janet Craig-Hare, our Director of Data and Assessment, is here with us this evening. And Dr. Cynthia Johnson, Executive Director of Inclusion, Engagement, and Belonging, is also here with us virtually this evening.
Hello and good evening to the board. Thank you for this opportunity to bring you the fourth quarter Safe and Supportive Schools and Equity update. This is our fourth and final update for the 2022-2023 school year. On our next slide, I always like to take a moment to remind us and everyone in the room and online of our focus of this specialty report for Safe and Supportive Schools and Equity. It focuses on safe and supportive schools and data-informed decision-making. As Shannon just said, on the next slide, the presentation will include Dr. Janet Craig-Hare as well as myself. So, we look forward to bringing you information and sharing data in this report. On the next slide, we see our equity policy. And one more slide, we have, in this equity policy, I always like to take a moment to bring to our attention section five of this equity policy where it states, "Under the Board Monitoring, the superintendent and/or the superintendentess designee shall report progress and outcomes at least quarterly to the Board, District, and Building Equity Committees and the broader..."
attend. Sometimes it's the PD days at the beginning of the school year, just to explain our role to new staff members. Sometimes it's football games between two specific schools. We just didn't want to take that away from administrators to request us whenever they want us. So that's what number 11 was for.
Okay, thanks. And I also think it'd be a great opportunity for, you know, just with the police departments, this is not just isolated to Lawrence, but nationwide, where there is a distrust with the community, especially the BIPOC community. So I would think it would be great for everybody. It's a win-win for the SROs, the police, and the students to see that role, the role modeling, if you will.
Absolutely. So we're happy to give presentations to anybody that requests our services. We did the Fentanyl presentation here into every school. So, yeah, we're happy to do it. If you guys want us to come in and tell you what we do, we're all about it.
Super thanks. And if, and again, if you have anything that you want to share with us, what's working, what's not working, please let us know.
Sure. I, I think this year, this is my second year going into my third year in this school district. I think what's working is the relationship we have with the district and the administrators. I mean, it makes our job so much easier. So I really don't have a lot that's not working right now. We just started our second week of our teen police academy. We have some LHS students and prestate students. We have 20 kids in that. So just building those relationships with those kids, it's, it's been great.
All right, thank you. And this is a plug for you, but I know that there are some trainings for SROs where the public can come in. Are those in Fort Hayes, if you will? I'm not sure.
So I teach for Nazro as well.
Yes.
They're all over. Our next one is in Derby in the first week of August. And yes, board members, administrators can attend those basic SRO classes, advanced. Yeah, we're happy to have you. So if you want that schedule, I can send it to the board. It's on Nazro's website. You can attend any of their trainings.
Great. Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, great. Any additional questions or commentary from the board? If not, motion, we'd be ready for motion.
I move the Board of Education to approve the memorandum of understanding MOU between the City of Lawrence, Lawrence Police Department, and Lawrence Public Schools, Unified School District 497.
Erica, second.
Kadu Blackwood?
Yes.
Boarding Ross?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Kimble?
Yes.
Van?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you. Okay, we're ready for our reports this evening. We have two. Our first is the Safe and Supportive Schools and Equity Fourth Quarter Update. And Dr. Jana Craig-Hare, our Director of Data and Assessment, is here with us this evening. And Dr. Cynthia Johnson, Executive Director of Inclusion, Engagement, and Belonging, is also here with us virtually this evening.
Hello, and good evening to the board. Thank you for this opportunity to bring you the fourth quarter Safe and Supportive Schools and Equity update. This is our fourth and final update for the 2022-2023 school year. On our next slide, I always like to take a moment to remind us and everyone in the room and online of our focus of this specialty report for Safe and Supportive Schools and Equity. It focuses on safe and supportive schools and data-informed decision-making. As Shannon just said, on the next slide, the presentation will include Dr. Jana Craig-Hare as well as myself. So we look forward to bringing you information and sharing data in this report. On the next slide, we see our equity policy. And one more slide, we have, in this equity policy, I always like to take a moment to bring to our attention section five of this equity policy, where it states, "Under the Board monitoring, the superintendent and/or the superintendentess designee shall report progress and outcomes at least quarterly to the Board, District, and Building Equity Committees, and the broader Lawrence Public Schools community. Reports shall go beyond state and other standardized testing outcomes and shall include race equity explicitly." On the next slide tonight, I want to look at this quote and this passage, if you will, from the Education Northwest Research Center, where they really have pulled together what it looks like and what it means to use data to expand equitable opportunities for our students. And let me just take a moment to remind you that when we look at our data, when we collect our data and analyze our data, it is not a scorecard. We are not trying to keep score. We are truly taking time to go in and analyze what is working, what needs to be improved, and in some cases, what things we need to do away with. So that's important to remember as we look at the rest of this information on the slide. When you, when we as a team use data to expand equitable opportunities, we can use the data to inform deeper conversations. And these deeper conversations center around asking questions. What is going well? What things are we making progress in? But what are the areas that still need to be accomplished? Another area is focusing on what matters most. Using the data to expand equitable opportunity includes high-leverage indicators. You see those indicators listed on the screen before you. One of the ones that we're going to talk about tonight is absenteeism. We know that not only in Lawrence Public Schools, but throughout this nation, absenteeism has been a major topic even before the pandemic. But now that the pandemic, we're in the latter portion of the pandemic and we're coming out, this has still been a major topic for our schools, for districts, and for families. The last part is looking at the data and planning for transparent and accessible communication about the findings. This is an example of what we're doing right here tonight. We're sharing the data and we're looking at those findings. But one of the things that I loved about this article that it captured is that always remember that what is revealed as it relates to equity data is not always pretty. We always like to focus on the great things, but there are other things that, that may not be working as well, and we honor that, we acknowledge that, we own that, and we make those changes as we go through. So on the next slide, I just want to take a moment to take you through our Building Equity Team focus. And I appreciate the work that the Equity Teams did this past year. This is authentic equity work because it centers on the students. It moves beyond the conversations. We have had years of great research-based training and professional development, and we're still engaging in that work to have courageous and critical conversations. But what types of things do we need to do to move beyond those conversations? That's one of the things I shared with you when I came before you in October. And our focus was implementing actions to create equitable classrooms and to change student outcomes. You're going to see some examples of tonight, of how some student outcomes have definitely changed. On the next slide, I will not go through these seven questions, but these are the questions of our equity work. This is what authentic equity work looks like, because once again, it centers on those questions. It is not something that is made up. It is not something that is false, but it's truly responding to those questions, gleaning the evidence that we have and that we find, and then making instructional changes to improve outcomes. So next on our presentation, we have Dr. Jana Craig-Hare, who's going to come to us and share the CAP subgroup data and the academic success.
Okay, we wanted to start tonight with our preliminary data from the Kansas Assessment Program. And that's what CAP stands for. So I say it's preliminary because there's still a data cleaning period in July, and then the results are finalized by the State Board of Education in the fall. So these assessments address state-level, state-grade level standards for students in grades three through eight and 10 in ELA in math, and grades five, eight, and 11 in science. These are measuring skills and knowledge in the assessed content areas. Students receive a scaled score that correlates with a level of proficiency. And those levels, level one is a base, or a limited, limited ability, level two is a basic ability, level three is effective, and level four is excellent. So as you can see on this slide, nearly 70% of our students are scoring at the basic level or above in both ELA and math. So then at the district level, we start breaking this down by subgroups. So this next slide shows our ELA subgroups. We're looking at gender, economic disability, students with disabilities, English language learners, and race and ethnicity. We're interested in moving students to levels three and four, but we're also interested in moving students out of level one. And that's really what this breakdown starts to show us. On this, you can see students with disabilities, English language learners, African-American, and Native American student populations all have over 50% of their students scoring at level one. In math, we're looking at the same subgroup areas. And again, our students with disabilities, African-American students, and Native American student populations are all over 50% in level And then science, with the same subgroups, has six different subgroups with over 50% of the students scoring at level one. So we shared similar subgroup data with our buildings, and now Dr. Johnson's going to share some of the data highlights that the buildings are using.
Thank you so much, Dr. Jana Craig-Hare. I want to just give a highlight for Lawrence High School. I know that Jessica Basset is no longer with our district, but I wanted to talk about the work that has taken place over the past two years as she has led the team and really seeing some significant results as it relates to subgroup data. You can see the list of improvements, the improvements with female students in ELA, improvements with African-American students in ELA, improvements for multiracial students in ELA, as well as improvements for students who qualify for free and reduced lunch in math, for Hispanic students in math, and improvements for white students in math. I mean, you see just the description below there, it focuses on decreasing the number of students in level one. That is, that is one of our major focus areas as we decrease those level one and level two students, and then to increase the levels three and four. One of our expectations for our KESHA work that we do for our next round, even though we've just finished up this, this, last five-year segment, is to improve and move students out of level one and two. So it's really exciting to see that that work has already started and that we are moving in the right direction. I had a chance to talk with Jessica Basset, as well as, I went back and looked at her building go check-in, which was a video, and just really wanted to hone in on what are some things that worked at LHS. It's so important to remember that there's no way to take what has worked at one school and say, we're going to go back and do the same exact things at another school. It doesn't work that way. And there are a menu of things that the, that the schools put in place to really show that improvement. But these that you see highlighted on the bottom of the screen there, it focuses on the use of academic language school-wide. I just remember the excitement of this process that was put in place, teacher-led, on focusing on academic language. When students can see the words and understand what the words mean, that leads them to respond in a completely different way. Another strategy is enclosed reading. It helps students hone in and focus on details and have a greater understanding of what is in the actual passage or article. And then, this is one that she was so very excited about sharing, is about the professional learning communities. And she gave the example of the math team. The math team, they learn from each other. If there was a teacher that had a particular standard, and this teacher was outstanding in teaching that standard, that teacher taught it to everyone so that everyone could go in, try that same strategy, and then see those positive results. So this is just a highlight of that subgroup data and the work. And let me say, Lawrence High School was one of the schools, we have multiple schools that have shown improvement. We also have schools that we still need to go back and, and continue to work. We can't rest us on our laurels. We will keep moving forward. So, Dr. Craig-Hare, I will turn it back over to you.
Okay, next, we're going to look at academic success. KSDE has set the threshold for proficiency at levels three and four. So academic success is more of a KSDE term. This is based on the Accountability Report, and that's a report that they publish out for all schools and districts across the state. So this chart represents the percentage of students that are scoring at levels three and four, and then we're using the same subgroups that the state uses on their report. So these charts show the longitudinal data over the past six years. And remember that there was no state assessment in the 2019-2020 school year. So in all subgroups, we're showing slight increases from last year in math, ELA, and science. It's not necessarily at the levels of pre-pandemic, but there are increases from where we were last year from the percentage of students that are scoring at levels three and four. For students who receive free and reduced lunches, we're only seeing an increase in science since last year.
Dr. Craig-Hare, just for context, I know we really need to focus on data in our own district, but are the drops from pre-pandemic to post-pandemic on the state assessments, is that something that other districts are seeing in their state assessment data in this way?
Yes. Yes, we are seeing similar, similar drops across the state. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Looking at a couple other subgroups, with students with disabilities, we have an increase in ELA since the 2021-22 school year. And then African-American students show an increase in ELA along with an increase in science. And then the Accountability Report only has the Hispanic students, but we added in Native American students for this report, too. And for both Hispanic students and Native American students, we see a demonstrated and increase in both math and science since last year. So for students that are, the percentage of students that are scoring at levels three and four. So next, we'll go back to Dr. Johnson, and she's going to share an elementary data highlight.
Thank you so much. As I stated, there are other schools that are, also could have been highlighted tonight, whether it's in one or two areas. Tonight, Schwagler was selected because Schwagler is the school that has shown a significant improvement in all areas, content, subgroup, and grade levels. And you can see on the screen the improvements for female students in ELA, male students in ELA, improvements for Hispanic students in math, improvements for ELL students in math, improvements for all students in science. I could have used really two slides to capture all the work and things that Dr. Comfort and his team has put forth this school year. I so enjoyed just being able to have a conversation, a great conversation with Dr. Comfort last week. And we talked about, okay, what, what really worked at Schwagler? Again, you know, we can learn from what happened and what took place at Schwagler, but it's not always replicable in other schools. So we use what we know right now, and then we try to learn from one another. So first of all, he said a strong focus on PLCs that are focused on data-driven conversation and planning. So you're not just having a conversation. A conversation alone is not going to do it. You have to have a conversation and a plan. I know Dr. Lewis talks about hope is not a strategy, but when you have hope and a plan, then you can go somewhere. And it's the same exact way with the data-driven conversation. And then you put that plan in place. And then the focus on building relationships between staff and students and families and building those strong connections. And then emphatically, Dr. Comfort talked about the implementation of the AVID strategies. So this is an example of when you take all of those pieces, and there's still more. I told him, I said, just give me three really, really strong ones, because he could have listed more. This is the result you get. You get a significant improvement in all content areas, and that alone is very exciting. On our next slide, I just want to really just bring to you where we're continuing this work as we look at our Equity Teams. We have our work that we started, and I shared these questions with you in the very, very beginning. We have revised questions to really reflect the language that is being asked of us in our current KESA cycle. And it says, "Who are the marginalized students in levels one and two?" But that blue part focuses on what is the data show about how we are educating all students? Because that's one of the questions on our next, on our needs assessment for KESA. So this is the work that we will continue in our Equity Teams within our district level as well as in our building level. Really excited about this piece because what I love is that our Equity Advisory Council for the district, one of the things that we are bringing back and revising a little bit is our subcommittee. And we will have Equity Advisory Council Accountability Partners. One of our sections or one of our subcommittee, I mean, Accountability Partners focuses is on the closing the access, opportunity, and achievement gap. We have a partner that is focusing on our family engagement. That is a huge piece that we want to strengthen as we look to improve the outcomes for all students. So at this time, we'll pause just for a moment to see if there's any questions.
When I was preparing for the meeting, particularly looking at the slides where you highlight a particular school like Lawrence High or Schwagler, and I'm glad to see that they've had some improvements, I can't tell what the decrease, I mean, I don't know what exactly I'm, I want to celebrate their successes, but I wasn't sure, decreased students in level one and two from what? So I went back and looked at in the agenda, the data that was included in terms of the district needs assessments. I think it's a document, it's like 117 pages, but there is, it pulls out like Schwagler or Lawrence. And that data is only up until 2020, I think, or, so where would the board get this information to know exactly what we are looking at?
So we're looking like at these slides.
Correct.
This information comes from the Accountability Report.
Okay.
But that Accountability Report doesn't get produced by KSDE until the scores are finalized.
Okay.
And so that'll be after the fall, and then KSDE usually posts these out roughly like October or so. So the report you're seeing online probably goes through last year, so the 2021-22 school year. So we took the data from this year and said, we want to see this before, before October, basically. So that's.
So where it says there's a decrease, you're, and when you talked about, and I apologize, but when you talked about the data being not yet clean, is it presumptive that there's a decrease, or is it a significant decrease? I mean, why the?
It is, what we're looking at today, we kind of did some manual cleaning on it, but KSDE will do the other cleaning. So it's pretty much finalized.
Okay.
But what we'll do in July is they'll put it into the AMOS system, which is Academic Measures of Student Success. And then we'll go through it. Any students that have like special circumstances, so if they weren't testing, we'll make sure that that score isn't reported. Because the first thing that happens when we get the assessment results from KITE, which is the program, the KU program that runs, runs everything, if a student didn't test, then they're listed at like a 220, which is the lowest score you can get, and a level one. And we know that student didn't test, so we take out that score. So then that manual cleaning process, we're doing all that to get to these results. And then when the state does that, then they're doing that on their end as well. So then that's what they use to produce the reports.
Okay. So I, I think I understood that timeline from last year as well. I mean, that's, we similarly run into it. So I guess a general question, so that the board was looking at data that they could begin, and I know you are looking at it now in terms of your planning and your building needs, goals, but I'm wondering if the report itself needs to be in July, this particular report?
Yeah, because of the preliminary, yeah. Yeah, it's a little premature, but then the other piece of it is, we're asking buildings to do needs assessment and look at their data and plan things for next year. So
Okay.
In some ways, we'd like the state to have these reports a little faster.
But, okay, so it does sound like there is enough data for you, for principals to make make decisions for you all to look at. So even though some of this is early for us, you have a very good vision of where things are going in each particular building. I guess for me, in future, like when looking at the presentation, it would be helpful, like in the examples, if I knew the comparative data, that would be, like a decrease from what, I guess, would be helpful to me. So I could understand what we're celebrating.
Yeah, so the comparative data, like the, the longitudinal?
Right, if there was a decreased students in level one and increased student, if you wanted to highlight a particular building, it would be helpful to me as a board member to know what, what exactly it has decreased from, from the year prior.
To see something like this for that school that we're highlighting.
Yeah.
Got it?
Thank you.
Thank you so much for bringing that to our attention. That is something that we definitely can add.
Appreciate it. Thanks a lot.
I think last year, I know we did this like in July, and there were slight changes once it all got finalized. So just a little bit here and there, but not, not a huge percentage jump of anything.
All right, thank you for educating me. Appreciate it.
Right, next we have attendance and behavior update.
Okay, we have several slides here, so hold on. So we're starting with the attendance. And overall, our average daily attendance is slightly higher than it was in the 21, 22 school year. So the three bars on the left side of the screen show the past three years. So this is our ending average daily attendance for this school year. So average daily attendance looks at the percentage of all students attended on each school day and then aggregated for the school year. So basically, it's how many students on average showed up every day for school? So that's our average daily attendance. The light blue charts on the right side of the screen are what we've seen this quarter. And we were updating you quarterly as we came back to do, to do our updates. At the beginning of the school year, we were at 92.5, and then we ended the school year at the 90.68. So there was a slight decrease, but not really that much between the first semester and the second semester. So and I really credit our buildings to paying attention to the data and really working on attendance issues within their schools to not have a bigger decrease on average daily attendance.
So the average 90.68 just happened to equal the quarter four percentage?
Because it's accumulative.
It's accumulative, it's not by quarter.
Yes, so not by quarter. It's accumulative. At the end of the second quarter, we are at 91%. At the end of the third quarter, we are at 90.8%. So it's cumulative, it keeps adding on throughout, throughout the school year as we're reporting it. Then we break this down by race and ethnicity subgroups. This is just one example that we look at the attendance data by subgroups, so we can also filter this in other, other subgroup areas as well. But based on this chart, we're seeing that Asian students have a higher daily average attendance percentage than African-American, Native American, or the Pacific Islander students. So in these groups, those three that I just mentioned, are indicated by the red bars, those are considered chronically absent, which leads us into our next piece for chronic absenteeism. So chronic absenteeism is another measure that we continue to monitor. It's defined as a student missing 10% or more of the school year. So for any reason. So that's excused and unexcused absences could also include if a student's in an alternative placement program, such as the SAP program, which is Suspension Alternative Placement, if they have a court appointment, if there's illness, or out-of-school suspension. It does not include if they're gone for an activity, if they're in an in-building placement program, a homebound placement, in-school suspension, being in the nurse's office, recovery room, or tardies. So all those things I just mentioned actually counts the student as present for that day. So it does not count them as absent and does not lead to the chronic absenteeism. The 10% or more is based on membership days for the school year. So typically, our school year is around 164 days, so if a student missed 17 or more school days, they would be considered chronically absent. So if you break that down to nine months of the school year, if they're gone twice a month, by the end of the school year, they are considered chronically absent. So across our district, the 22, 23 chronic absenteeism rate is 29.7%. At the end of the first semester in December, we were at 31.6% and then 33.1 at the end of third, of the third quarter. So there's a decrease throughout the school year and since last year. So we're actually getting better on chronic absenteeism. So, and that is an accumulative total, also when we come back and report that. So that's adding up each time. The three bars that we're seeing here are the chronic absenteeism at each attendant school level. So this is looking at the average of just the 13 elementary schools, and that average, just looking at elementary, is 23.1. If we just average out the middle schools, so the four middle schools, it's 29.1, and the two high schools is 39%. So what this tells us is that more students are chronically absent at the secondary school level than the elementary schools.
So in looking at this slide, nope, the next one. I was waiting till the, till the next one came up.
That one?
Nope. This one. So I understand the definition of chronic absenteeism, and I know it's base, I know, I'm pretty sure it's from the state. And so this is less of a question, which is why I didn't wait, wait till the end, it's more of a feedback. This particular piece of data, from my personal standpoint, I find it particularly useless in this particular standpoint, because when you tell me, when we sit up here at a board table and congratulate or talk about our increase in graduation rate, and then present me a piece of data where almost 50% of our seniors qualify for chronic absenteeism, one of those two pieces, those two pieces of data don't line up with each other. So this particular piece of data, without context, doesn't do any good. So I understand why it's calculated the way it's calculated. I understand the formula, but just continuing to calculate it that way and present that number without any other context, I don't see the point. Because 50% of our seniors, with this calculation, included the highest graduation rate that we've seen since I've been on the board. So one of those two things is in disparit of the other. So I would like to see absenteeism as a district either calculated a different way or more context provided behind the number so that it's more meaningful.
GR, this, this is current 12th graders. The highest graduation rate was from last May. So this is, we haven't got the graduation rates for this year's seniors. It represents the 49% chronic absence, if that makes sense?
It, it does. So, but, so you're giving me data on kindergartners that we don't have?
No, this is current, this is the year we just finished.
Okay, so.
When we had our highest graduation, that was the class of 22, not 23. This is, this is 12th graders class of 23. These are the kindergartners that's just finished.
So those are the 12th graders that just graduated?
Right, 23, class 23.
I think I see GR's point, though, and I'll, I'll give a personal perspective as to why I'm kind of troubled by looking at this and, and trying to figure out what to do with it as a board member. So when I saw this report and I saw that we were looking at trending chronic or nearly chronic, I went back and I looked at my two high school students list for the year. I had one of my two high school students who probably falls into the nearly chronically absent category, who got straight A's the last semester and is going to college and getting a scholarship to do so. So what is this act, what, like, what should we be taking away from this? Because I don't really feel like the reason, like, for example, the reasons he was absent for a bunch of days, we went on a bunch of college visits. Those are excused absences, but the state requires you to pull those and count them against, basically count them against the district for that. So I, like, I kind of share GR's skepticism about, I mean, we should definitely be looking at our chronically absent students who are not showing up to school and who are struggling, but, yeah, 49% of our seniors? Like, what, what am I supposed to do with that?
So, couple of things to think about. One is, looking at the data is only one step, right? That's the first step that we take to see, do we have a student who is chronically absent? And then we have to dig a little deeper to understand why that student is chronically absent. And is that impacting their academic achievement? Your student might have been chronically absent, but it didn't impact their academic achievement. We have many students
But it does.
That it does, right? We have many students who graduate, right, but may not have the skills to, you know, they got all the credits they needed, but attendance is one of those workforce skills that we've heard really has a big impact on when they're going to be academically or post-secondaryly successful, right? So once they get out of high school. We don't look at any of these things as the marker for a student's success or our abilities. We look at them as, as useful in thinking about what interventions might be possible to help that student academically succeed.
And I guess, I guess what I would like to know, when looking at this data, if you just present to me this number but no context, I don't know what you're doing with that number other than telling me that 49% of this last senior class was chronically absent. And I look at that number and I simply dismiss it because I, I'm like, no. So if, if you're digging into it and determining of that 49%, which ones you're helping and which ones you're not, for, just to simplify the statement, it would be nice to know what, what that looks like when you present the data.
Yeah, I think your policy requires us to present this data. We look at this data all the time with building principals. This is a regular thing we're looking at and thinking about what types of interventions do we make? We could do, and it may be good, and that's what the board, we may do a deeper dive into attendance, talking about the difference between chronically absent and truant, and what are all those processes? We can certainly do that if that's an interest that the board has, but your policy requires us to provide the data, and so we provide the data. We can go way deeper into what are the interventions, if you like.
I think I'm curious about
Policy?
Oh, go ahead. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
I, I think that I challenge that just a little bit, Patrick. That was actually helpful context to share that, and I, I can see what you're talking about. I think the policy requires that you present the data and show us how you're utilizing it actually in terms of the way that I read it, so that we understand that, that you're utilizing meaningful interventions, which you are. So the context around like what you're doing with the data, which is, I think, coming up a bit in the presentation, is a, is a, is in that equity policy in the way that I read it. If you're not getting that from the equity policy, I do think that would be something we would want to amend. If that doesn't feel directive to you, if you feel like you just have to give the, the board data with no context, that would be a problem with the policy, and we can certainly look at it closer to make sure that we're getting something that would be helpful for decision-making.
And I think I, I would ask some questions about, I mean, I know that there's a state definition of chronic absenteeism. Are there any components of that that we have local control over? For example, how we code absences in Power School? And, and is this, is this data, is this really helpful to you? The way that we're coding absences in Power School? Or are there changes that we would want to make or that you would want board policy to read differently about? Because, because for instance, it was very helpful to understand that kids who are gone for an activity are not included in this, right? But are there other things that should, we should be considering?
We have identified absenteeism, especially after COVID-19, as an alarming trend that we're seeing across the districts. And that's true across the country. You'll see, if you look and dig into those, those building goals, there are buildings that have identified like attendances are. We can't help kids improve academically if they're not here. That, that is number one, right? So there may be changes to policy that we need to make. There may be just more discussion that we need to have publicly here and with families about attendance and the importance of attendance and what it means. And using that term chronically absent really helps determine the difference between unexcused, truancy, that's one thing, and chronically absent. So your student comes 30 minutes late to first period every day, and I could bring principals, when I was a principal, I remember it, that kid is chronically absent, and if that's their science class, it's going to impact their assessment scores, right? So we need to continue to work with families and work as a district. I, I appreciate what you're saying, Kelly, and, and maybe that's something we need to talk about, about how to sharpen these reports so they're very clear, like, this is the data and this is the reaction. This is how we are intervening for that.
I think, I actually think you do that, just to be clear. I think you do it in several different spaces. But I do want the policy to be working for you and for the board, and if there's some way that we can help make sure that these quarterly reports are not just something you're doing laboriously, but have a meaning for you and for, and for the district, and can help move increasing opportunities for students and having an impact on these numbers, that's what I, I would like to see the policy be doing. So if it's not doing that, I do think it's a deeper discussion to have at a different time.
Thanks for the conversation.
Yeah. Additional, any additional follow-up on that particular? Make sure that we've closed the loop on all the questions. Okay.
Great.
Thank you.
Okay, yes, thank you. One of the probably most important contexts that I would say with this particular graph is just looking at that trend starting in seventh grade and knowing that that could lead to dropout and graduation rates. So a higher dropout rate and a lower graduation rate. So that's one of the things we want to start putting implementations and interventions in, in place to address that before that does become an issue.
Thank you for, for sharing that, that piece, because the attendance is certainly a leading indicator to students dropping out. And of course, as Patrick mentioned, if they're not in the seats, then obviously they can't learn. I think the next slide, you can kind of make some assumptions or you can kind of correlate some data, just by looking at this chart here.
So this one is the chronic absenteeism, and we know that typically it is the same students missing school on a regular basis. So looking at this with our subgroups, our scholars with the least chronic absenteeism are represented by the Asian group, and our scholars with the highest chronic absenteeism is our Native American and our Black or African-American students. So, and I will share that these reports or these charts are coming out of Unified Insights, and that's the tool that the board approved like last November, and this is what we're rolling out for, for schools to see as they click on any of these. So if I want to see, you know, the 38% of our Black or African-American students, they can drill down and see who are these students and start answering those equity questions and looking at, okay, is this a chronic absenteeism that is affecting grades or not affecting grades, like what Patrick was just talking about?
I think I shared at a previous board, I mean, we had two subgroups that were not outperforming the state, and it was students with disabilities and Native American students. And you see the chronic absenteeism for our Native American students. And you look at our highest performing academic group, it's our Asian students, they have the lowest chronic, chronically absent data.
I do appreciate the districts looking at this information, especially the absenteeism and looking at this, and just looking at our promise that was mentioned earlier today. Not only is graduate on time something we want to do, something we're tracking, the metric, but also the second part of that is prepared for success. And so I really appreciate that the district, you, your team, Patrick, everyone, Dr. Johnson, are tracking on this. This is really important, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
I have a question about, when you look at, when you look at this subgroup data, and I, I'm not asking you to do this at the board, but I'm just curious, are you cross-referencing subgroups with our free and reduced lunch students category? And like, I'm just, I'm, I'm looking at this and I'm wondering about what is driving these numbers? And does anecdotally, things that you hear, for example, transportation challenges and those sorts of things, and I'm wondering if, if...
Yes.
I'm just wondering what that looks like.
Yes, so that's actually easier to do in the tool that we have with Unified Insights, because we can, you know, this is one filter just looking at race and ethnicity, but then we can apply a free and reduced lunch filter on there, our students with disabilities, and it's pulling all the information from Power School. And so then we can look at the same data set, but with that lens and say, okay.
Tells us something different. I think it, I'm just thinking, it tells us something very different if those numbers line up and we're talking about issues of poverty that are preventing kids from getting to school versus if those numbers don't line up and we are talking about institutional racism in some way. in some way that is pushing kids out from attending school.
And I think on the, the trend data that we saw and one of those slides was the free and reduced lunch data, and we did see a decline in that. So, I think poverty does play a big, big piece with that.
Definitely after post-pandemic, things like that have been exacerbated. You know, when you think about just the economics of, of some of our families and transportation being one of those, those barriers. And this data aligns nationally, pre-pandemic, 2019 nationally, it was around 16% chronically absent. Post-pandemic, 33% nationally. And that's the highest that the United States Department has, the United States Department of Education has seen chronic, the chronic absent, absenteeism data since it started collecting, I think in 2016. And so, some of the factors that they looked at were things like that, economics. And then also, parents, students seeing the value in in-person learning. Because what did we do during pandemic? We were at home learning. So, trying to get them back in the habit of, yes, I need to go to school every single day has been a challenge.
Okay, helpful, thank you.
This is Carol. I am troubled by this data, just like my colleagues here. But I, I'm looking at the, the American Indian or Alaska Native population. And I, I just gotta, I have to wonder just what my colleague said. Is it transportation and poverty does play a factor? And that's poverty. But also, and since Mr. St. Pierre is here, I don't, I'm gonna put him on the spot. But I would like to know how this district can help support our Native American students. I know that we have had some gaps in services. What can we do as a board to support our Native American Student Services program? Thank you.
Have Kenny come up.
Thank you so much for being here tonight. Kenny, and I appreciate everything that you will share.
Can you go ahead and ask that question again, please?
Sure, this is Carol. I, I am deeply troubled by these numbers that I'm looking at the, specifically the American Indian or Native American population. And I know that it was mentioned before that this district would, you know, we would, would look in to get in you another social worker to help you. Because you, it's almost, it's not impossible, but it's difficult to cover all the Native American schools, the students. So, what, what, I'm just flabbergasted. How can we help you? What can we do to support you?
I mean, historically speaking, this is a common thread in, in not only public schools, the last district that, that I was at. I would say these numbers are pretty close to what I dealt with in South Dakota. I would have a van, I would knock on doors, pick up students and bring them to class. I'm more than happy to do that here. I know, I know it's a lot bigger district than a rural school, but I'm more than happy to do that. It's, it's, we have to get them in the classroom and that's most importantly. I also think just on, on a fundamental level, that relationship building is, is, is key. Our native families need to have trust in the, in the buildings that they're at. They need to, our teachers need to have relationships with our native students. And, and we just, we just need help, honestly. There's no other simpler way to put it. It's just our Native American students need help. We need all hands on deck.
I have a question. That was a great question, Carol. So, this, for American Indian and Alaska Native, this is data district as a whole. So, this does not represent the students that participate specifically in your program. Is that right? So, if we were to pull data from just the students that participate in Native American Student Services, is it safe to assume then that this higher, this number would be greater than? Trying to find a.
I would make the assumption, yes, because from what Kenny said, you're having that relationship and, and building on, on those strong, strong pieces that you're doing with the Native American Student Services program. I think that program is going to have an influence on getting kids to school and raising that attendance percentage.
But the way Kenny's program is set up is that it can only serve students that are federally recognized in the program. But this data here shows for those students that identified as American Indian, Alaska Native. So, this data looks at, I figure, all of those students. So, if we were just to pull that data and look at Native American Student Services, I think I would assume that this, the chronic absenteeism for those students would be even higher than based on what I'm showing here. So, those 46 students that are potentially already participating in NOS students are probably even larger. So, I think Carol got at a really great question, like, what are the gaps in services that the school district would need to support? And I think that we're on our way there by using Broken Arrow School as a hub sort of for Native American Student Services in the future. And I think that's just one avenue. But I think even based on the, what we've seen today for students that are at Level One, I, and this goes back to what Patrick said earlier. I know I'm just like random thoughts. What Patrick said is we can't help students if they are not here. That's alarming to me. Because if those students are not even here in school, we're not helping them. We're not getting, and I think Kenny said something really important, that we're not getting to those students. We're not providing, we're not building those relationships. We're not building those strong relationships with those students to get them into our classrooms to see what services they need. So, I think, for me, it feels a little bit, and I think using the word, and I don't like using this word either, is failing our students in that way. But I think that we're, we're definitely challenged with the resources this year. And I'm not sure what the solution would be that other than just hearing from native students and parents in the community when they come in at the beginning of the year. Because I'm familiar with the program that there has to be an assessment to meet those program, programmatic needs for this, for NOS. If there's any way that we could help as a district to see what the community, the native community is saying about those gaps, where they would like to see services for their kids.
And to, to that question, I, this is just stuff I'm hearing from the community. That relationship is, is really key. Like, I had a pool party at, down at the Aquatic Center. Had 43 families. And that by far is the most participation families I have ever, I have ever received throughout this, this whole year. It hasn't, it hasn't even been a year yet. I just want to say that. But if we can get more participation, having our family see somebody is here to help them with their voice, I would assume that we are moving in the right direction. And that is alarming. It, it's alarming. I, I understand that. I get it. And I think it's just building those relationships. What can we do at a, at a building level? At, at a principal level? At a teacher level? Parental level? What can we do? And I think NAS as, as a department, we just, with the budgeting and all that, we, it, funding is limited. I will put it that way. And I think when we think about it, when I think about it, what can we do as a whole? Like, we, as a community? What can we all do as a whole to help take this problem down? Does that make sense?
It makes sense. And I, I appreciate your comment. And I don't mean to come off as like, it just, I've been sitting on this, sitting in this seat for four years. And I think I've seen, and I, and I've said it every year, seen the same data for native students year after year. Hopefully, in the future, and I know that you're growing your program and expanding those relationships with families that have not been involved before, which is really nice to see.
Thank you.
Kelly.
And this is Carol. And I, I know that we, as a district, we can do better for you. And number one, you know, maybe, you know, fix your key card so you can get into every building without having to beg to get into the building to, you know, talk to our students. Is that something that, I mean, we just want to help you in any way. I mean, we are struggling to recruit and retain teachers. And we want to do everything that we can to help you.
For sure. I mean, the key card, it doesn't seem like a big deal, but it is a big deal. You know, just going into a school building, it's like, I gotta go in. I mean, everybody does it. I know it's safety, all that good stuff. But if I can just get access to our students without having to go the extra, the extra mile. I mean, I'm not saying I can't do that, but I, I mean, I do do that. But it's just, when you look at the big picture, everybody knows who I am. I mean, I'm here for the students. So, I just, that whole access is a little, little different to me. I've had access to the schools in South Dakota. So, it just doesn't, doesn't make sense to me. But.
Well, thank you. And I just want you to know that personally, you've made a difference in my child's life. So, thank you.
Kelly, did you have a follow-up question?
I just have a question related to the thing, to Paula and Carol's comments. So, from, can you remind me, you're, are you singly staffed? We used to have a, a second person when I first started on the board. But are you the solo person operating now?
I do have an assistant, Shayla Chikeway. She's my assistant.
Okay.
And just trying to like honestly, just make those connections in, in each school. I try to identify a person in each school that if they can help me help the native students out, I think that's important as well. Just if we can, so what I used to do in South Dakota is like when, if it was at 8:15, if the, our native families didn't show up, you know, this is, I don't want to put another duty on somebody else, but I would just go and check and look at the absent list. And then if my native families are on there, I'd call them and I'm like, hey, do you need a ride? Hey, what's going on? Sometimes I'd have to knock on their door and be like, hey, is your student here? Or, you know, just, you know, poverty is huge in South Dakota. So, I would be picking up students at their house and bringing them to school. And I would contact the, you know, the front desk lady and say, hey, I'm bringing in little Johnny today. So, he's gonna be late. And then also, rural poverty, it's, you know, I'm always providing a meal or a snack or something for the students. So, I've done that before too.
I can see why Carol asked about additional, I, I think I heard you ask about additional staffing. So, you mentioned a social worker, but it could be someone within the community that might be able to help build those relationships. But it does sound like maybe that's something for consideration, particularly if those high touchpoints are helpful for getting people back into the school. So, I appreciate you stepping up at the, without being asked to tonight.
No problem.
And I appreciate Carol and Paula's questions so I can better understand what you're facing. Thank you.
One more thing. I would just like to acknowledge and thank Kenny St. Pierre. He's using his own time. He has visited all four reservations here in Kansas and then some. He's even gone to visit my tribe, the Kickaboo Tribe in Kansas. And he's not done, he's been collaborating with all four tribes in Kansas, trying to figure out how to reach these kids, how to better serve our kids. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I know we need to move on to behavior. But I, I was really encouraged during our summer institute with the building leadership teams over at Free State. They were diving into this data and teachers were in there talking about strategies to address attendance. So, I'm very pleased with some of the goals that they'll have in their building plans to address this.
Thank you. Thank you. Great conversation. I think sometimes the data presents that sense of urgency. So, we have these really good conversations around it. So, next we have our behavior events. So, behavior events are office-referred events that could include items such as academic misconduct, bullying, discrimination, attendance issues, fighting, vandalism, threat, sort of things along that, that line. So, looking at the behavior events in these charts, the blue represents the number of events. And then the yellow represents the number of individual students involved in the behavior events. So, we have this separated out by elementary, middle and high school. So, since the third quarter, the number of behavior events reported at the secondary schools has decreased. So, it's also decreased in the number of students involved in those behavior events at the secondary levels. And then this table shows the behavior events by race and ethnicity, so the percentage of events across all four quarters. So, the number in the parentheses there is the approximate number of students at this, at each subgroup level. So, the right-hand column shows the percentage of change from third to fourth quarter. Green is a positive change, even though it's a negative number. It's a positive change. We're moving in the right direction. And then the red reflects a negative change, so where the percentages increase since the third quarter. So our most positive changes are highlighted there in the light gray color, where we've seen decreases in behavior for African-American scholars at the elementary level, and decrease in behavior events for our white scholars at the middle and high school levels. So those have decreased over 12% since the third quarter. So there are a couple items there that are not reported, just because we have fewer than 10 students in those subgroups. And then we continue to monitor our in-school and out-of-school suspensions. So there's a lot going on on this chart, so I'll kind of talk us through it a little bit. The top part of the graph shows the in-school suspensions. The bottom part, below the black line, is our out-of-school suspensions, and there's a blue arrow that points to the fourth quarter, because we're showing all four quarters, so we can look at trends across time. Overall, there's been a decrease in in-school suspensions during the fourth quarter, with the high schools decreasing by 20 ISS outcomes, so that's in-school suspension outcomes. On the other hand, at the, for out-of-school suspensions, that we've actually increased. So elementary schools were the only one that decreased their out-of-school suspensions during the fourth quarter, so between third quarter and fourth quarter. And then, in a few instances, a behavior event may lead to both in-school and out-of-school suspension. So this is captured in the text along the bottom of the screen. During the fourth quarter, we had eight situations that had both an in-school suspension and an out-of-school suspension. And since this is fewer than 10 students, then we didn't break that down, so by elementary, middle, and high school. And then finally, there were 846 behavior events that were reported during the fourth quarter, and of all of those, 680 of them had restorative practices that were used. So restorative practices were implemented by either the teacher or the administrator, and they include things such as restorative questions, restorative circles, conferences, things like that, that they're asking students and getting a student voice in as part of the investigation to find out what really happened. Questions?
No questions, but I appreciate your work here.
Okay, Dr. Johnson?
All righty, let's go to the next steps. Before I, before we take a moment to look at this next slide with the next steps in 2023, 2024, I just want to say thank you so much for the great conversations that have taken place tonight. Great questioning for us as we go back and look at data and how we present data, but also I want to say thank you so much, Kenny, for being there tonight, and, and just the work and things that you're doing. I want to be able to say that to you publicly. I say that to you individually, but I want to say that to you publicly, but thank you for being there tonight. On the next slide, Jen, if you will, advance that next slide. I just wanted to hit just a few of our next steps. We will continue to make instructional adjustments based up on the subgroup data, and I heard you loud and clear, Kelly, when you were talking about the, the increase and the decreases and how do we come up with those, with that, really that, that final decision, and whether it was an increase or a decrease. Here, we heard that loud and clear, and Dr. Craig Hare shared how we can look at that and share that with the board and things in a way, once that data and things is finalized. But just, just based upon preliminary results, like I said, making those instructional changes. We have schools that have really dug in, and, and they really did the work, and answering those questions. The majority of the administrators used, you know, different types of spreadsheets and, and different things. You know, there's a couple, couple principles that I love, you know, tried and true, they did, they did their information and tracking and monitoring and looking at that, tracking that data, using paper and pencil. And I love it when they said, you know, we're gonna try to, you know, move it to electronic for next year, but I just said all that to say that the work is taking place. We didn't see the gigantic gains that we, we wanted to see, but there are schools that are heading in the right direction. And the ones that are not quite there yet, we're gonna step in and we're gonna support them. We're going to give them what they need to help them become and remain successful. The next part is the completion of the district restorative practice framework. Elementary today was putting in their final touches, since we will have all of our elementary schools by the end of July trained in Tier One. And then the completion of our behavior matrix, that revision and alignment will bring all of that information and things in July. And then a piece that we're adding this year is really working with the lead principals, working with the building-level mental health teams, partnering with Kylie Luckard, who, who is in those mental health team meetings every single week, but really looking and analyzing that weekly attendance data to determining what do we need to do to connect with the schools, connect with the students, and connect with the families before it becomes chronic. The next part is to analyze the weekly behavior data and identifying what types of things that we need to have in place, interventions we need to have in place to address the concerns. We know that, that, you know, many of these areas will be addressed with our new social emotional learning curriculum. Today, we had the great pleasure of working with high schools, and what does that implementation look like? How, how do they get started, so that we know that that work is going to take place? Another piece is engaging our caregivers and our families. If we truly want to see achievement change and head in a completely different in, in direction, we have to engage our families. We know that is true for our Indigenous families, but we also know that is true for all of our families in Lawrence Public Schools. So thank you so much for your time tonight. We appreciate your questioning and just conversation around data and how it impacts equity. At this time, we, if you have any other questions, we will answer at this time. If not, we will conclude our presentation for this evening.
Are there any additional questions for Dr. Craig Hare or Dr. Johnson? Okay, thank you so much. Appreciate your time this evening.
Yes, as Patrick comes, I do want to, I know, Kelly, you mentioned really wanting to know what to celebrate, again, based on these preliminary data. I do want to just take a moment to honor the families, staff, and the leadership over at Swegler. The only building that made, and it was mentioned, the only building that made academic gains in math, ELA, and science at every grade level, third, fourth, and fifth, every subgroup. ELA gains anywhere between 15 to 25% gains. Math gains anywhere from two to 23%. Truly remarkable. That's a true testament to the staff over at, and to the families and students over at Swegler. So I just wanted to honor them in this space.
That's great. Thank you for sharing that. I appreciate it hearing more about their work too, so. And they're, having had an opportunity to interact with some of their teachers, I'm not surprised to see some of that happening at, particularly at their building, so thanks for sharing.
This is Carol, and yeah, this is, yeah, I think most of you know where I'm gonna go with this, but I would like to acknowledge Kenny and his team. They, if you were to visit the school, you would see every tribal nation of the students represented in the school. That's outstanding work. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Our final report this evening, School Improvement District and Building Needs Assessment with Patrick Kelly, our chief academic officer.
Good evening. Thanks for the introduction. We're gonna talk about needs assessment and continuous improvement. There's no action required. I know when we talk about needs assessments, sometimes you have to receive them. One of the things we heard from you last year was you'd like to get this information sooner, because it was pretty tight last year when you got your needs assessment, so we made some adjustments in our calendar and schedule. So we are looking for feedback tonight on some goals, and we'll walk through that. But we're gonna start by talking about the two different needs assessments. You're familiar with the Kansas Educational Systems Accreditation, or KISA, and last year was our first year of KSA 721163, which requires a needs assessment for each one of our attendance centers. And we're also gonna talk a little bit about building and district goals. Dr. Lewis shared with you all earlier that we have completed our first round of the KISA continuous improvement process and received accreditation. Really pleased with the work of, of all of our educators in, in getting this done, and you should be very proud of that. It just means we get to start over. So we are back into phase one, and we're in the needs assessment and process analysis. And these are some questions that are part of that. Where are we now? You just got a report that shows that data. We include every one of those reports in our KISA process. We see that as part of it. How do we get there? Where do we want to be? How are we gonna get where we want to be? So you've been very articulate in your desire to see progress in some of these areas. We wish we had all the solutions for that, right? We have a limited set of resources, time, people, and money, and so we have to, we have to really be cautious and make good choices about it. And so a needs assessment helps us do that. We look at what progress we've been made. You ask for time, you know, data over time. Are, is what we're doing making a difference? And we constantly are assessing whether, what can we take off the plate? And you're gonna hear something that we did a little different this year, because we heard you and, and heard our teachers say we need to take something off. And then what is that supporting evidence? A needs assessment is compliance as well. So KSA 721163 requires some specific questions. We'll go over those. Those needs assessments are in your packet. That's something you need to receive by statute before making budget decisions, but you probably didn't notice that all federal funds that we get require a needs assessment as well. So in career and tech ed, we do a needs assessment. In title, we do a needs assessment. So one of the things we've really tried to do to make it easier for buildings and principals is weave it all into one. Let's ask all the questions at one time. And the needs assessment they did, the one that's in your packet, was lengthy. I'm not gonna, but it does allow us to do it one time and have all that data in one place. Is there, is there any overlap, or is it? Yeah, there's a ton of overlap, and we're looking for those things. Some things, like our career and tech ed one goes really, it drills very deeply into what are the jobs that are needed in the area. We do that as a region, but for title, this really helps, because they can look at their, their data for, they have to look at free and reduced lunch status and things like that, if they're a targeted building, so this whole process really helps us make good decisions about that. This is just a quick overview. I shared this with you last year on, on the law and what's required. You're required to conduct and publish a needs assessment. We do that for you. And a state assessment review, we do that with, well, you did some of that tonight, so. And the minutes of the meeting in which you review your annual budget, you need to accept that needs assessment. What you got in your packet, I think someone referred to it as the 117-page report, that, that is a draft. That's where we are right now. We may make some adjustments to it. I think the needs assessments are really close, but the goals will continue to be adjusted as we go.
At the building level.
At the building level.
Okay. So the principals will continue to, with their staff even through this, is it happened through the beginning of the fall? How to, or is it just tweaking that's happening?
Yeah, so we'll talk about what they did at Summer Institute. We really want our principals to take some time off and not bring teachers back again and again and again. So we've just said, like, get it close. The teaching and learning team this summer will give some feedback, and then when you come back at the beginning of the year, your building leadership team needs to tighten that up. Yep. Okay, so that leads into Summer Institute. Each attendance center has to do a needs assessment, as I mentioned, and the procedures can be teacher-leadership teams. So we said, we're already coming together at Summer Institute, let's just do it there. All the building leadership teams from every attendance center come. We continue to make adjustments to this event. This year, we did something a little different, where we brought principals in the day before and walked them through all the steps of what they needed, what we hoped they would do, gave them some extra tools, and then really let building leadership teams do the majority of the work. We got some great feedback on that. We're pretty pleased with it. We still have adjustments to make every year, but we're pretty pleased with the event.
Patrick, I don't know if you, if you were planning to mention this, but as part of that Summer Institute, didn't you also have parent and student focus groups?
Yep, we did. That's part of our, they worked on their CI3T primary plans, which are how we are going to share expectations about behavior, social, emotional, and academic, and we need to get feedback from parents and students there. Are, are these expectations realistic? Are they things that we can support? How do we teach them? What happens when a kid doesn't meet those expectations? And having parents and students give us feedback on that is, is really helpful. Thanks for thinking of that. So the building needs assessment includes a lot of data. We do demographic, demographic data. You see a little picture there of the accountability reports. You already talked about that a little bit earlier. It does make it kind of interesting that Topeka asked us to do a needs assessment before we have accountability reports done for the actual year we're working on, but that's the reality that we live in, and so we give you what we have as soon as we have it. And that percentage of scoring, three or four on state assessments, is very clear in there, and this report does give us those demographics there. We'll talk a lot about post-second, well, I know it's late, we won't talk a lot. We'll talk about post-secondary success rate in a little bit, and graduation, and attendance rate, and ACT performance. We did some new things this year. We created some data profiles for each building and for our district, and those are in your, your packet as well, around some other locally kept data metrics. So you may be familiar that the social, emotional measures need to be done locally. It's up to every district how they do it. We use SRSIE as the measure that we use. So we thought it would be good to put something similar to what the state puts together for our district. We divided it by secondary and elementary. We also did some CI3T things, and we tried to share this with buildings in doing their needs assessment. We also have a marvelous tool called Pianorama. We've done climate surveys for students, staff, and family. I've been in the district for quite a long time. I can't remember the last time we did a family climate survey, and so we're gonna do those twice a year to continue to grab data and feedback from families and students and, and staff. So we have lots of data to look at. So once you have that data, we have to determine what our current reality is through our needs assessment, and then we look at what our vision is. You all call this the promise. Dr. Lewis said to me, why does it say vision? It should say promise. My answer was, that's what the graphic was, so it says vision, not promise. But your promise is on there, and the promise we all make is that our third graders will be proficient in reading and math, they'll be proficient by eighth grade, and they'll graduate on time, prepared for success in college and careers. So all buildings are expected to create goals that line up underneath that vision or that promise. We made some changes this year. In the past, we've asked them to come up with four building goals, one for each of the strategic domains. We heard from buildings, that's a lot, feels like a lot of initiatives. We dialed it back and said, let's do two to three goals, that we maybe don't need that. And if you look in your packets, you'll see, then they said, okay, this is our goal, and this is where we think it lines up with our strategic plan, because we heard from buildings that maybe my goal is in more than one spot. The other thing is, we're gonna mirror the KISA process and have it written for one, two, or three years. Sometimes you want to set a goal, put some action steps in place, but you don't think you'll actually achieve it for one or two or three years. This gives a little bit more window. And the last thing, and this is a change in the KISA process, we've had OVT teams, and if our OVT team still wants to do that, we can do it, but we're also, as a KISA process, thinking about professional learning communities. How can we meet with other districts to share our progress on our goals? And so we've done building goal check-ins. We're gonna adjust those a little bit, so that they're more a professional learning community among schools. They did that at Summer Institute. They were in small groups, two or three schools, to talk about, here's where our goals are, these are our action steps that we're looking, this is the data that we're reporting on. So we think that may help build a shared community and, and growth from peer to peer. In your packet, you'll see the, their building goals as drafted as of today. The needs assessment, and in there you'll see it includes the questions that have to be asked per the legislation. There's a link to the most recent building report card and a link to the performance accountability report. That's the most up-to-date data that we have. Now we're gonna talk about goals for the district. If we look at the promise, we said that all students in third grade would be reading proficient. What we failed to do was say what that means. What is that? And so our teaching and learning team took it upon ourselves to start thinking about, as we start a new cycle of KISA, let's make SMART goals. If we ask buildings to make SMART goals, we as a district should be able to make SMART measurable goals as well. So this is a draft. We want your feedback on it. I'm gonna share with you the goal, and then I'm gonna show you the data that says like how we think we're gonna get, well, not how we're gonna get there, but where that bar is, right? So we said by the end of 2025, '26, 75% of students in grades K through 10 will score at low risk on on-track on the spring FastBridge A reading or early reading assessment. We know that some think of the ELA assessment as being a reading assessment. It is not just reading. Your promise, or the promise we made as a district, was around reading, and so we thought it would be good to use an assessment tool that was specifically around reading. I think that's a good call, because every assessment is about reading. It doesn't matter whether it's math, or science, or ELA. If you struggle with reading, you're not gonna do well on the assessment. And what we can't do is, if a kid isn't reading at grade level by third grade, we can't quit on him. So we felt like we needed to go all the way to 10th grade. It lines up really well with the Every Child Can Read Act, which requires us to do screenings for dyslexia. We're already doing this screening, and you'll see that data here in a minute, but it lines that up really well and gets us focused to make sure every kid in our district can read and can read at, at an appropriate level for where they're at. Here, oops, wrong way. Here is where we are. Spring 2022 is our first year that we started, well, 2021, '22 is the first year we started using the FastBridge reading screener. You can see where we are. We've made gains in reading. We've also had some losses, but you can see where we are now in 2022 and just this year, and then where that 75% mark is. So we're hoping to get there by the end of '25, '26. I see a question looming.
Yes. So given the amount of focus in the, in the media right now on reading instruction and reading proficiency and the approach to teaching reading, can you just remind the, the board in our community about the, the resources that we're using to teach reading and whether they are the kind of heavily phonics-based resources that are being discussed?
Yeah. I can feel Denise Johnson jumping through her computer screen right now. We would love to take this question and talk to you for a long time about it. So last year, we approved a new reading, a new ELA resource for elementary, and that is around structured literacy. Sometimes we say phonics, right? But it, it is all of structured literacy. We've also been doing quite, and so this year's professional development was dedicated at the elementary level to making sure we're using that with fidelity, that that new resources that was coming on. We have learned a lot about reading over the past couple years, and that the way we used to teach reading wasn't having the results that we would expect. So it's not surprising to see these numbers, actually, because I will tell you, as a teacher for many, many years, I feel like I committed malpractice in the way that I, yes, even in my band class, taught kids how to read. We did it by sounding, we did it by looking at picture cues and things like that, and take your best guess. We're back to doing phonics in a structured method, and we're using something called letters training. You probably have heard of this. It's been in the news a lot. It's It's the science of reading and how to teach reading. We have, we're like now on our, sorry Denise, if I get this wrong, our third cohort. This year, we even have a principal cohort that's going through this training. It is working. For those teachers who have done it, it is a in-depth training. It's a ton of work, and we used a lot of our COVID money to be able, our SIR money to be able to pay teachers to do this training. The cost of the training is covered by KSDE, but we're paying teachers to attend. But it is a large commitment because you're having to relearn how you teach reading, because many of us learned in a way that isn't having the results that we need. Is that what you're looking for?
Yes, and I appreciate that because I think it's really important for our community to know that when they're reading those stories that apply to this national conversation, that we have already taken steps in our district to address the issues that are now really gaining that attention.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And so based on your goal of '25, '26, and the spring assessment, your goal is to get these up to the 75% in three years? Yep. Okay. Thank you. That allows us to focus. That allows, we actually do these screenings three times a year, so we could provide you updates on a regular basis on how we're making, how we're getting closer, what are we doing? We could do a whole thing on reading, if you like, as we can come in and talk to you about what that looks like, teachers who've gone through letters and those types of things, what we do at high school and middle school for those students who are struggling with reading. Okay. Any other feedback on this goal before I go on to our math at eighth grade goal?
It's an aggressive goal, but I think it's the appropriate goal.
Yeah. We push our buildings to challenge themselves. Let's set it high.
Other, any other feedback for Patrick on this?
Okay. So the next goal that we're proposing, I went the wrong way, I'm really struggling with that. Okay, here's our math goal. We couldn't write something short. And it's because, if you're not aware, we don't do state assessments for math, and well, for anything, until third grade. But that doesn't mean we shouldn't be measuring our students' learning in K1, 2, and even pre-K. So we're looking for 75% of our students, they do a FastBridge math screener, and that early math screener, we'd like them to be at 75%. And then, math is a little different. We do believe that that assessment can measure the concepts and skills that we need for students to have. So we're looking for third through eighth grade at three or four on their math assessment, and to increase that by 10% every year. And then we've also set high school math in what we call introductory courses. So you see those introductory algebra, Algebra I and Geometry Advanced. We'd like to see those students at that 10th grade level increased by 10% every year. If you thought that goal, the last goal, was ambitious, this one's really ambitious because here's where we're at. Well, K1, 2, we'll make it. We can do that one, right? We're not that far away, same thing. Here's our Kansas Assessment Program percentage of students scoring three or four. The blue is 2021, then 2022, and 2023. We should take a moment and celebrate a lot of gains there in 2023. You see, we're starting to move the needle here. That's exciting. Still got to figure out what's going on in fifth grade, but we will get those scores up, right? But look how low a percentage of students that we have scoring three or fours, right? So in, and if we look at just sixth grade, it's 25% of our students. If in sixth grade, 25% of our students aren't scoring threes or fours, we got a long way to go before eighth grade. So we know that this 10% increase, and that's what you see there with the green, the orange, and that sort of teal color, I'm not good with colors, and that number, that 2026, those are big jumps. However, our secondary curriculum director, Sean Hanson, has convinced me that we're talking a couple kids in each class. Like, let's make a difference with a couple kids in each class. We can help those kids move up to that next level that we can make it. And so I think it's a big goal, but I'm all for shooting big, and maybe we don't get all the way there, but we get further than we thought we would. So again, open for feedback on this goal as well. We're putting numbers to your promise is the purpose of this.
Can I ask? Yes, Kelly. So I have a couple of questions around the, because I do see that this is a significant jump. So just a couple clarifying questions. Am I remembering correctly that two is proficient, right? So you're asking teachers to attain a pretty high level of achievement at three and four. So what kind of, like realistically, what kind of, when you were setting these goals, you know, how attainable are they when you either compare to other districts, or when you talk to other, when you've met with teachers or buildings that are doing the needs assessment? I'm sure there's been conversations with folks. So can you talk a little bit about that?
We had a lot of conversations. I think you're right. And we wouldn't be surprised if you encouraged us to do a 10% increase to twos, threes, and fours. That was something we actually talked about, like maybe three and four is too high. We also think state math scores are extremely low. We don't know this, but we think that the state might renegotiate with the feds. Is that where it was, Jan? No, we don't know. We're still going to have four levels, right? But what makes those levels?
So there's a new assessment that comes out in 2025?
Could you come, I'm sorry, Dr. Craig Hare, could you come up to the mic, though, to share this? Because I think this sounds like it's very important.
Yes. So there's a new assessment that comes out in 2025, and once that assessment comes out, then they'll redo the cut scores and redo the levels based on that new assessment.
Okay, but we're stuck with this until 2025, correct?
Yes.
Because it's the case that our cut scores in Kansas, on Kansas Assessment for Math, are some of the, if not the most rigorous, some of the most rigorous in the country, right?
Yes.
So what they're saying is that perhaps we have more students who actually are succeeding at levels.
Maybe.
Does, I think that, yeah, I get, okay, I get it.
I guess I wonder, when you think about the presentation we had previous, and the ask from the board to make sure, like Erica's point about, are they ready, what are they ready to do when they graduate? So you have them graduated, but like, what are they going to go out and do? And do they have the tools? I've heard Paula say that, Shannon said it as well. So what I'm wondering about philosophically, or just from a, maybe there's some best practice approach, is it better to focus energy on ensuring that we have those kids at the one, are getting to the two and the three, like you have just said? Does that, is that a focusing energy there? Does that get us closer to, maybe not excellent, but moving readiness to achieve in whatever postgraduate work they want to do? Or does this like, is this impossibility?
I don't know, I mean, I don't think our team would recommend it if we thought it was impossible. We think it's daunting.
Okay.
But I think we also have to prioritize our efforts when it comes to teacher professional development to move this along. And you know, in any goal you set, you want to find that balance point where it feels challenging enough, but it's not defeating, right? And so that's what, that's why we're looking for some feedback from you as well. I mean, we're trying to figure out what, the good thing is, we can always adjust our goal, right? And if we feel like it, if cut scores change, we probably will need to adjust our goal. I think we're going to have a, if I can just extend a little bit on what you started with, we have been meeting with high school principals as we start thinking about new high school graduation rates, graduation requirements, about what's our portrait of a graduate? Like, when we think of a graduate from Lawrence Public Schools, what are all the things that we want to see that would help us know that that student is ready for life after high school? It isn't just about having the right number of credits. That's not going to be enough. It's also about other skills as we think about, we'll talk about that here in a little bit. What are those other skills that I need? We've had some great meetings with ACT to talk about finding the ACT score that we may be shooting for. Right now, we don't do any state assessments for kids in ninth, 11th, or 12th grade, right? We do it in 10th grade. But there are tools that we can use to help our students prepare for what's next for them, whether that's work keys or ACT, that we, I'm not sure have been so implicit about being clear on that's the expectation and that's the standard for. So I'm excited to have, that'll be a community conversation. It won't just be amongst principals and teachers. We just, we need to hear from our entire community what they think our graduates need to have to be successful.
So having set this goal doesn't, will not, will not move so much energy into the students that are two and three, and away from those students that are one and two?
Right.
Is that a fair thing to say, based on what you were describing?
Yeah, I think so. I think so. And we'll adjust if it doesn't. Yeah.
Okay.
Your feedback's really helpful on this. Okay. You set the goal that every student is ready after high school. Oh, sorry, Paula.
I have a quick question. And I, we may, I might be backpedaling here for a second. So the two goals that you just presented will only meet students who show up. So based on the question that, or the discussion that we had with Dr. O'Hare, so are we unintentionally creating goals that are unrealistic for those students who don't show up to school? So that is like 25% of our kindergartens who are labeled as chronic absenteeism. That's 46% or 46 students of American Indian Alaska Native students.
Yeah. So that's an action step, right? You're talking about, so we're talking about lead and lag indicators. You're talking about a lag indicator. The lead indicator is, we won't make this progress if we don't address attendance, right? So that's something that we need to work on as well. And there are lots of things that we're doing in our buildings to try to address that, making sure students have the right social, emotional skills, right? So they can stay in class when things get challenging. What's that like? You know, addressing behavior, everything we do is trying to raise these scores. So, you know, we certainly want to be cautious of being too ambitious, and I'm sort of feeling like the board is saying, maybe we're being too ambitious, but I think we also want to put a challenge out there and believe that we can meet those challenges. If we increase it by 10% in 10th grade right now, we'd only be at 50%. So we've got to look, you know, we've got to start addressing these challenges one by one.
Okay.
Yeah. That answer your question? Sort of, not really.
It's bringing up more questions for me, but I don't want to challenge out of here, but maybe on our off.
Sure.
Yeah. One-on-one or something.
Okay. More questions there?
I think, before we move on, I'm sorry, I just, I got to say this because I've been thinking about it for a few minutes. So, you know, when we look at the assessment scores, particularly in math, those numbers of, the percentages of kids who are scoring in level one are larger than they are in ELA. So I think I, I'm not saying I think you should add level two back into this if you think that having it written this way will have the effect of pulling kids out of level one into level two, and then out of level two into three and four, but I'm just, I don't want us to set a goal that ends up, the result being that we pull kids out of that level two into level three, but we're still leaving all those kids in level one where they are, which really seems to me to be like, that's the, that's the hair-on-fire emergency within that math, and really the science data, too. So you and your staff know what the best way to write these goals is going to be, but that is, that is just the reaction that I was having to this. So I wanted to share that.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. There's great feedback. That's what we're trying to find that balance, right? That's what we're trying to do.
Thank you.
By the way, you approved math manipulatives this evening in your consent. This is tied to this goal, right? We are focused on this. Okay. Post-secondary effectiveness. So I'm going to explain what the goal is, and I'm going to walk through post-secondary effectiveness because it's a little complicated. I know you all are familiar with it, but we may have members of the public who aren't familiar with that measure. So our goal is, is that we will increase it to 54% the post-secondary effectiveness average. So what does that mean? So the Kansas State Department of Education uses this measure. It take, it starts with your graduation rate. So you can see our graduation rates there in yellow each year since 2016. Then it takes your success rate, and that's if a student meets the outcomes two years after high school graduation. So students who earn an industry-recognized certification in high school. So for us, that's right now, we do SERF safe, we do CNA, we just started NCCER, we're adding certifications as we go. They can earn a post-secondary certificate or a post-secondary degree. That's calculated with the National Clearinghouse data. Or they can be enrolled in post-secondary the first and second year upon graduation. And you see those rates, this is all calculated at the State Department, in the orange bars. You multiply those together and you get your success rate. Then we look at our five-year average effectiveness rate, and you see that in the blue box, the darker blue box, it says 48.2%. Then they give us a confidence interval of where we should be, and that takes into account things like our socioeconomic status for our county, the number of families we have, and compares it. It's a complicated measure, but they would suggest that we're between 51 and 54%. Right now, we're at 48%. So what strategies do we think we need to do to get to that? Well, one, we need to offer more industry-recognized certificates, right? If we can get them checked off still in high school, great. We need to encourage the state to accept more certificates because they have a pretty limited range of what they accept. Second thing is, we can improve our graduation rate. As you all know, this was 2020. We had much better graduation rates in 2021 and 2022, so we expect that number to go up. So already, our multiplier is higher. And then we have to make sure that students are prepared for post-secondary in high school. So that means looking at things like ACT scores. That means looking at things like attendance, right? We don't want that year, that 12th grade year, to be a year where I don't go to a lot of school because it doesn't, isn't very meaningful to me. We want to make sure that they have good academic practices so that then when they leave high school, they're going to go on. Some will say, like, this rate is really hard because it doesn't include military, and what about if a kid gets a job? That's where that adjustment is, right? So when you're talking about 51%, they don't expect you to be at 100%. They're saying 51% based on those things is their prediction. So we have lots of strategies in place when you talk about individual plans of study and those types of things, that we think will help this rate get up to 54%. So that's an increase of 6% average over the next three years. Pause there, see if you have any questions or feedback on this one. Think I've practiced wait time? Okay. So those are our three goals. We'll continue. Like I said, all of this is a draft. We're not expecting any action tonight. Late July, as Janet talked about, we hope to have some finalized state assessment results. You'll have a budget presentation on August 14th. We've asked buildings to have their building's goals finalized by August 15th. We will then send you and present to you on August 28th the finalized needs assessment, state assessment review, and then you have your budget hearing for approval on September 11th. So that's sort of the sequence, but we wanted to get you that large report now. There's some really great data to unpack in that needs assessment. We have, we're doing great things in this district, and it really highlights those spots where maybe, we just have one or two buildings who want to, you know, they're, this hasn't caught on for them yet. How can we provide better support so that they can get on board with that? Or maybe they are learning something that we need to understand, like, why is this not working? All of that data is just very informative to get curious and ask a lot of questions about. So if you have questions about it, we are all ears. Speaking of questions, let's go.
I have a question for you, Patrick. So, you know, that, the statute, the Senate Bill statute and the needs assessment process for the board is pretty prescriptive, and it has some findings that the board is expected to make. The two that I have, I wanted to just throw out as, these are the ones that I think I would have the most trouble. these are the ones that I think I would have the most trouble being able to complete without a lot of assistance, are the finding about what budget, budget changes would need to be made in the district to move kids from Levels One, Two to Three, Four? So what is, and I looked at the hundred in some pages. I did not read all of it yet. So maybe some of this is in there, and I need to spend that time to dig deeper between now and September, but, you know, that for each building, like, as a district, as a, as a whole, making that finding, and then making a finding as to how long will it take us to do that work? Do you feel like by the time we get to September, we're going to have all the pieces in place for the board to make those findings?
Okay, let me answer your question. Let me first start with a, I don't think anyone knows the answers to those questions. Let me start by saying that.
That's, that's a, that's a real answer.
Right. And so I think we do the best with the information we have. We worked with Green Bush this year and with other districts to develop a list of responses to those questions.
Okay.
Because we thought we were putting some undue pressure on building leaders and, and building leadership teams to answer a question that quite honestly, if you're a Star Wars fan, it's a trap, right? And so I think, you know, we certainly, you all make the best decisions on how to improve student learning on a regular basis. That is what your commitment to this office was, and you do that, right? Every budget decision you make is trying to get kids to have more success. So saying what the one thing is, if you know it, fantastic. We want to have you write a book, right? And if you can tell us exactly how much time it's going to take, that, that's, that's, you know, that's a lot of confidence there. I think what we're trying to do is make progress, right? And we're going to experiment with the best strategies that we know that are backed by research, that rely on our principals and our teachers to give us the best evidence that they know that this is making a difference. And so that's a roundabout way of saying, we're going to do the best we can to answer these questions. We're going to follow every part of the law that's required. But I think these questions are a bit of an opportunity to.
My question was not meant to be a trap to you because I 100% agree with you that, that the way that statute was written was not designed to support us in doing continuous improvement work, but it was written to be a gotcha for districts so that some legislator who doesn't support public schools can grandstand about how we don't, we, we don't make these findings or whatever. As part of that work that you've done with Green Bush, I mean, are some of the answers that you've come up with, that goal's not achievable without additional resources from the state?
I would encourage you to take some time, I know that's a really long report, and we only got it uploaded over the weekend, to read the, you'll see a lot of repetitive answers there. Essentially, we, we gave them the needs assessment, and they were to click all the boxes. I'm hoping by, I can go through and tabulate how many times you heard the same answer over and over again. But you'll see some language in there that I think is really helpful. You know, how many years does it take? Our KISA process does that, right? The goals that we're setting are part of that process. It's a continuous improvement process. To say that there's a point when we've arrived is really, that's not what.
It's no child left behind-ish, which is not what we're doing anymore.
That's not what school improvement's about.
Right, okay. I didn't mean to put you on this.
Oh, I don't feel that.
But that, but like, this, this part of this particular piece of that statute really.
It's problematic.
It's been problematic, and it, and I, so I want to take every opportunity to point that out. So, thank you. Additional questions for Patrick?
This is Carol, not so much as a question, but just, you know, speculation as to students enrolled in a post-secondary institution following high school graduation. I, your guesstimation, speculation, pure speculation, but have the numbers improved as schools such as Harvard, Dartmouth, KU, and Haskell have done away with standardized testing?
I don't know the answer to that, Carol. I think there's a, there's a lot of things that are impacting students' desire to enroll in post-secondary school. Personally, I wish we'd broaden our definition of pro-secondary success. And thinking about workplace or military, I think some kids take a gap year, so saying, well, you have to do it in your first two years is pretty short-sighted. I think just the cost of post-secondary education is a very limiting factor for a lot of folks. That said, I think there are people who are working very hard to make community college available at no cost. And so, you know, I don't know that there's one thing that we can point to. I think there's a lot of moving pieces here. But I think one thing we do know is that the workplace now requires you to have degrees if you want a job that's going to pay at that level. And so I think that's what we have to prepare. Not every kid's going to find that path, and not every kid who doesn't follow that path isn't going to be successful. I want to say that. But if we look at the majority of the data for the majority of kids, we'd like them to do at least two years of college. There are going to be kids who don't, and they're going to have great little businesses or whatever they do and make lots of money. And, but money isn't the only definition of success either.
Absolutely. Amen. Thank you.
I hope this report is helpful for you. If you have any questions, like I said, it's draft. You can reach out to Dr. Lewis, and we can try to get you some more answers as necessary. But it was really an attempt to get this to you early as you think about your budget deliberations.
That was very helpful, and I appreciate your responsiveness to the feedback about how much time it, it will take all of us to do the work that we are supposed to do between now and that budget, the end of that budget cycle in September. So thank you so much for doing this heavy lift earlier in the year.
Thank you for building leadership teams. They did tremendous work over that, over those three days. It was really, I wish you all could have been there. It was really inspiring to watch them look at data, question their own beliefs sometimes, like, this is what I thought, but the data is telling me something different. And if I believe that every kid in my school should be there, what do we need to do? What behaviors do we need to change to make sure that they get there? It was a, it was a pretty inspiring three days. I felt very proud to be a U S D four nine seven employee.
That's wonderful, thank you.
Patrick, just a quick question. How were your community members and parents recruited?
For, that came to the, so they were either on our site council, or we asked each principal, well, I don't know about that. We asked each principal to do that recruiting, so, to provide. We bribed them with lunch, and they met with Dr. Kathleen Lane or Kylie Luckett and did some work on how to gather that information, and then they met with the individual building teams.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes the final report. Dr. Lewis, do you have any closing announcements for us?
Just a reminder, July 10th, board meetings are our organizational meeting. Quite a few things on the consent agenda.
Yes.
And the swearing of a new board member.
Yes, and also a reminder about board leadership elections. Please send your self-nominations or nominations of another board member to Elise by the Friday before that board meeting. Okay, motion to adjourn, please.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.